Yeah.
Yeah, because I was thinking some actually. I'm sure glass. It does say something about that.
Cycle it out.
Love it.
That's the only thing I go.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's.
Think so.
That's for somebody else.
For that in any of the conditions.
The bottles.
So.
Sure was happening five hours later.
Wow. So is it in the shop or restless stuff or they done? That was. Really, it was just the one. It's all of that.
Didn't hit. He was a guy. So it didn't hit the roof. Just. And I. We're bored. Just. And.
That's February. Why don't they come to your house?
Because you have to take it there because I got a calendar.
That doesn't look. I sent stuff back here, did you know?
That's because it has the stuff that shows up, the holograms that show up on there.
It's. Ordinance. Um, this one.
And. I was driving down.
They were calling. Okay.
What's it good from the inside?
Did you see? Yeah, I don't know.
Oh, I wonder if that's my email. So the.
I saw.
Enough of Spain. Put numbers and show for that.
Well, a couple of. We've looked.
Okay.
Because it would be way down.
Seven oh one.
Yeah.
So.
Uh, three, four, eight, five. It's literally a right number. This is. Yes.
But for windshield, are you paying that much? For my insurance, it's like $200.
Let me get cranked up here.
Well, I get a thousand dollar.
But I think windshield.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is the appointed hour and uh, like to call, or rather before I uh, call this meeting to order and invite anyone who intends to speak tonight uh, to sign on the signup sheet over here. Um, uh, at our time of um, citizens remarks and comments. But uh, welcome one and all uh, to the Thursday, September seventh edition of the Lexington City Council meeting. I like call them into order and our first item of business. If y'all will uh, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of Wisconsin. One nation under our. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Uh, in review of, in consideration of the agenda, the next item, uh, there is request under the consent agenda for item nine point two to be uh, pulled out. And we will separate uh, uh, deal with that separately after the consent agenda. And are there any other changes or modifications to the agenda the council would like to make this evening? Hearing none, we will adopt uh, and approve the agenda with that modification. Uh, next item, uh, presentations, uh, first we'll hear from uh, Rara and Lindsay Perez. Lindsay, thanks for being with us and welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Um, so I just was asked to give you all a couple of updates on what's been going on at Rara lately. And as you all know, um, when we purchased the building a couple of years ago, we wanted to make it a safer and more welcoming environment for everyone in the community. And I can happily say that construction has finished and we've put in the final touches. Uh, it, the new waiting room, private intake offices and restrooms for shoppers in our neighborhood grocery are open to people visiting our neighborhood grocery. And um, we are having a ribbon cutting next week. You all were invited, but if for any reason it went to your spam, it's next Thursday at eleven thirty at Rara. We're going to keep it short and sweet, so if you have other things going on the rest of the day, I hope you can still stop by. Um, and so the other things that we've been seeing lately at Rara. Um, is really in the last year, an incredible increase in the amount of people needing our services. Um, so last year, for instance, we saw 1,000 more visits to our neighborhood grocery than in the previous year. And since then, it's skyrocketing. So in March, um, that benefits AKA food stamps went back to pre pandemic levels. And we went from seeing about 575 visits per month to over 800 visits per month. Um, it's been really incredible. We're fortunate that with the volunteer capacity, um, and our relationships where we get USDA food, that we're still able to, to handle this increase. Um, it's still working smoothly in the grocery, but it's, it's just taking a lot more resources to do it. And so this could be new families that are coming to us. It could be people that haven't been there in several years that are coming back or existing families that are having to come more frequently. Just because of the price of food and um, not having as much uh, support in purchasing those items. At the same time, we've seen drastically increased food costs. While the USDA had really a surplus of food coming in during the COVID pandemic. Um, it's gone back to, to a lot lower levels and the food we're purchasing costs more money now. So we're having to source from other vendors besides USDA. Um, and it's just a, a big change that we're seeing. We've also experienced increased demand for utilities assistance and housing support. For example, last year it was uh, over 25% increase in the number of cases that we approved compared to previous years. Um, part of that, I think we are becoming more efficient in our applications after uh, implementing an electronic database. But once again, it's because of the need in the community. Um, and so even with this growth, we know there's still people in the area that we're not serving. Maybe they're not comfortable coming to us for one reason or another, maybe they don't know about us. And so as part of our 2022 to 2024 strategic plan, um, we want to identify any populations that we aren't adequately serving, whether that's by location. Um, age, race, primary language, whatever it may be. And so we're looking at data from both of our programs to figure out what those groups are, and then we will conduct targeted outreach to address those. Um, whatever concerns they might have or whatever reasons they're not coming to us. And so all this being said, um, what we need is just a continued support of the community. Um, luckily Rara has that, but to be able to continue serving these, these huge numbers and, and potentially reach more people is just gonna. Take volunteers and supporters and people getting the word out um, about our services. And so I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but that's kind of what we've been seeing.
Lindsay, thank you so much for being with us. Members of council have any questions?
Uh, I'll just disclose that I'm on the board directors for Rara and I serve as a development committee chair. Um, and if any action were to be taken, I would uh, voluntarily remove myself, although I receive no financial compensation uh, for that volunteer position.
Thank you, Mr. Betts. Mr. Ziegler.
Lindsay, thanks for being here. Um, you mentioned about the increase from the, you know, 500 range to, I think you said 875.
Oh, right.
Is there a, is there a tipping point where you cannot?
Um. At, so on a given distribution, we see about 50 households coming through. They tend to show up right at the beginning and then it slows down towards the end. Um, so I think, I mean, we could serve more people. It's a matter of having the funding to purchase enough food. Um, to, because of our stock is, is, you know, it goes quickly and we have to um, every week get a huge order in. Um, we've been fortunate to have some grants uh, that have supported the direct food costs, but. With a, a budget doubling in the last couple of years for our food cost or possibly more than that. Um, there, at a certain point, there's going to be a level where, where we can't sustain that.
And where, where are you taking food at this, at this point?
Right.
You've got the truck, you've got different outposts.
Exactly. So we're open at our Lexington location four days a week, plus people can schedule times outside of that. Um, we also work with Campus Kitchen at Washington and Lee to go to um, various locations throughout Rockbridge County. So um, Goshen, Natural Bridge, Fairfield. Uh, we do some home deliveries and then we do Lexington House and Windermere here. And then we have volunteers that deliver food to individuals' houses if they aren't able to, to come to one of those locations.
Thank you. And if someone has questions, uh, go ahead and give your uh, website or phone number, please.
Raralex.org has a lot of information, but they can also call us at five four zero four six three six nine four three. Don't quote me on that.
Lindsay, I want to thank you on behalf of landlords in the area about how much you help tenants who are in need. Typically, when they are not able to pay rent, it's due to no fault of their own. And they no longer have their rent relief uh, to keep them from being evicted. So it is pretty scary right now if you cannot get your, your rent paid because. It could land someone on the street. So thank you for keeping that from happening as much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I think a lot of people don't realize that that side of Rara is more than half of our programming budget. Whereas the neighborhood grocery is very visible. Um, the utilities assistance and housing support is a lot of what we do. And especially it's, as everyone here is aware of, it's hard to find housing right now, affordable housing even more so. And so it's so important to people, keep people housed and where they are living um, through that assistance.
How are things going to go this winter, uh, especially this winter for the homeless?
I know that you have like a voucher type program to allow people to stay over in local motels.
Um, how is that going to look this winter?
Yeah, um, I think we have seen an increase in requests for, from people experiencing homelessness. And even more so in the winter, we will obviously when it gets cold. Um, we partner with a lot of the shelters in the surrounding region. And so there is a warm shelter that opens in Waynesboro in the winter. Um, and the other shelters do have beds at this time. And so our focus right now is to try to get people to those long-term solutions where they can get case management. Um, or get them into permanent housing. Uh, but in extreme weather situations, if someone's not able to get to a shelter that night, then we do have the ability to um, to put, use vouchers. The hard thing is finding, there's a few hotels that we work with. Um, not every hotel is willing to do that and then they get booked, so we don't always have options.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, it, it, it gets pretty scary when you have like a seventy some year old woman who's been living in her car for months. Uh, coming to ask for housing and there's no room in the inn. Um, it, it, it's impossible to think, you know, how they're surviving and then they tell you the stories and it's unbelievable.
Right. Definitely send them to us because we can talk through some options.
Thank you.
Lindsay, thanks again for being with us and more importantly, thank you for the work that you and your whole team and uh, team of volunteers do to make our community a stronger and, and more uh, lovable. Uh, community as well and uh, welcome you anytime and certainly uh, for the balance of our meeting, but if you'd like to go enjoy the beautiful evening, please do so.
Thank you.
Take care. Thank you again. Uh, next time our agenda is uh, Rockbridge area community services report and invite Kim Shaw. To the podium, welcome, glad you're here.
Thank you all for, thank you for having me. Um, last year I came and uh, gave a report uh, detailing pretty much kind of what the CSV does, who we are, where we. Um, originated from, if you will, and this year I would just like to provide you with a few highlights of what uh, fiscal year twenty-three looked like for us. Um, I did just want to state for anyone who might not recognize, we are one of forty CSBs across the state. So there are CSBs in, in all areas across the state. Um, and we are considered the community safety net for those with mental health, substance use disorder and developmental disabilities. Um, the board appoints representatives to our board. So your representatives for the city are Mike Gilmore, Linda Nicola and James Geary. So um, we are very happy to have them as part of the board. Um, this past year, we actually celebrated our fortieth anniversary. So we've been providing services in the area since nineteen eighty-two. So November of the previous year was actually the fortieth anniversary. We were just delayed in celebrating. Um, we, this past year also were fortunate enough to be able to update our logo and our mission statement. Um, our mission statement used to be about a paragraph long. It was, it was a mouthful, so we were fortunate enough to be able to do that. Um, last year I reported that we were facing workforce challenges like everybody else. Uh, we still have shortages, so um, and some of those in our key areas are licensed individuals and managers. Um, but we are pretty much back up to pre pandemic levels for staffing. So that is, that's really good, especially for our direct support services for our residential facilities. Um, we have started some new programs and one program that we're really excited about is our peer support program. Um, and peers are individuals from the community with lived experience. Um, so we have uh, peers that uh, for substance use disorder, we have a peer. Um, we're still trying to grow that program. We have one for veteran services and uh, for family services, so and for mental health. And they help those that are coming in for services to navigate the system. Because they've been through the system, whatever that might look like. Um, so we were really excited about that and we're, you know, again, still actively. Trying to hire more peers, looking to potentially partner with Rockbridge Recovery um, to maybe get. Uh, they, they have a pretty big peer population, so just looking at different options um, and different avenues. We are really proud, I'm really proud of our partnerships. You know, that's one thing that we do really well. Um, we partner and collaborate. Um, I think Superintendent Almroed is going to speak to some of that as well, but we partner a lot with the jail. Actually, the trustees um, do a lot of work for us. They actually do all of our landscaping and all of our yard work and they do a phenomenal job, by the way. Um, they did some um, floors for us uh, in the building. They actually did some stripping and waxing of floors. They did a better job than one of the professional services we had hired. Um, so we're really excited to work with them. I think there, uh, we're getting ready to undertake them uh, building a pavilion for us like uh, at the side of the building. So again, it's been a great partnership and that's just one of many partnerships. Um. We partner with the schools. Um, and all of the school systems, but I guess specifically relevant for you all. We partner with Lexington City Schools to provide the uh, Too Good For Drugs program in the schools. And also um, staff do the Red Ribbon Week, which is basically alcohol, tobacco, violence prevention. And that week falls sometime in October and I don't know exactly when that is. Um, another thing that we did last year that we were pretty excited about, we moved our CIT Assessment Center. Um, from the hospital back to the CSB. I think you saw that.
Yes.
Um, so it's actually a beautiful room, therefore it hadn't been used at the hospital for the last couple of years. Due to COVID and then. We just never got back there. Um, and the hospital actually needed the space, so it was, it actually worked out well. Um, we were able to take that extra money that we were paying the hospital for rent. Um, and put that back into the program to help fund sheriff's deputies. So that is a partnership between the CSB law enforcement and hospital. Um, and for those who don't know what CIT is, because I recognize that's an acronym, I apologize, that's the world I live in. The Crisis Intervention Team. So it's um, basically to help instead of, it's jail diversion. So instead of sending individuals to jail who are experiencing a mental health crisis, um, officers are trained. At one point in time, we pretty much had a hundred percent in this area trained, but due to turnover, I don't think that is the case now. Um, but they're trained to recognize a mental health crisis and to um, divert individuals to that CIT Assessment Center where they then. You know, are assessed for whether they meet criteria to be admitted to a state facility. Um. And so anyway, that is uh, one of the things that, it's, it's a beautiful room. It's a, it's a great space. Um, let's see. Another thing that happened last year that we were really excited about because it was the first of its kind, I believe, in the area. We partnered, collaborated with, we didn't partner with because we actually didn't play any instruments with the Rockbridge Symphony. To provide a sensory friendly since uh, concert. Um, it was so well received, like our families and not just people that uh, receive our services, but just individuals. Families with individuals that have developmental or intellectual disabilities that were actually able to come and enjoy that. Um, they were so excited and we had set up a separate room in the back for those that wanted to hear the music, but couldn't be right there in the room. So that was just a great experience. Um, we are actually going to be partnering with them again this year. So on November eighteenth at five o'clock, um, at the Presbyterian Church. So we invite you all to come enjoy that experience. It really is, was a wonderful experience. Um. We did serve approximately nineteen hundred individuals last year. I do not have the specific breakdown for which disabilities, uh, the number is based upon disabilities, but we did serve about nineteen hundred individuals. That's unique um, individuals and that's about average for us. We usually anywhere from eighteen hundred to twenty-two hundred on any given year is about, is about where we fall. Um. Another pro, we, another program that we did um, implement, that's one of very few across the state. And I haven't been on the front lines of this implementation, um, but it's called Zero Suicide. Um, and I wanted to mention that to you all because again, it is one of very few programs across the state, even within CSBs. And what we did was launch, uh, it's a universal suicide screening for all mental health and substance use disorder clients. Um, and basically it's an evidence-based safety planning tool. And one hundred percent of our staff who work directly with clients are required to be trained in that. Um, so I just grabbed a little bit of data just to um, share with you guys that. The most recent information we had was twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two and there was one thousand two hundred ninety individuals in our region. That, and that's a non-count, that's a non-CSB region, um, the region one. Um, died of suicide. Um, and just within our catchment area in that timeframe, there was thirty-five individuals. And you know, those, those numbers are huge, like one death is one too many. So anything that we can do to have our staff and the community better trained and knowing what to look for. Um, that is another thing that Brian shared with me is that the Lexington City Schools, like all of the administrators are. That is another thing that Brian shared with me is that the Lexington City Schools, like all of the administrators are, last February were trained in assist, which is applied suicide intervention skills training and all of the Lexington City School staff are trained in youth mental health first aid. So that's a really big deal. I believe that's all that I had to share of like our fun updates from last year. But I'll be happy to entertain any questions. Hopefully I can answer them.
In regard to the CIT facility?
Yes ma'am.
When law enforcement encounters a mental health incident, do they have the option as to whether to go there first or go to the hospital as they used to?
So it's based upon, if, if they're going to be ECO, so if they're not going voluntarily, they're coming to our center. If they're going voluntarily, they're going to the hospital.
Okay.
So that, that's really the, the criteria. If they have to put them in emergency custody order, they're coming to see us.
And is that 24/7?
So CIT hours of the actual assessment site are 10 to 10. However, we have 24 hour emergency services, like somebody is going to answer the phone and somebody is going to do an assessment anytime that it's needed. We had staff working all night and all day today on a case. So they're always on call.
As I recall with the law enforcement and they, once they get engaged, it doesn't stop until you get a placement or there, there's a conclusion and it's
Correct.
You don't, oh, my shift's over. Have a nice day.
No, not at all. It's, and DBHDS has actually worked with local. They were able to find a pot of, they have a pot of money, you know, they have money we don't have. So they are actually able to call in some off-duty officers. I know that Sheriff Funkhauser has that he can call in some off-duty officers and they're paid from the separate pot of money that doesn't come out of our CIT funding to sit with individuals because we often have individuals that take more than the eight hours.
Mr. Smith.
Thanks for being here. The, you mentioned there are 40 CSB regions, areas, whatever you want to define it as.
Forty CSBs across the state.
Right.
Yes.
And 1,900 came, 1,900 individuals came through our doors here.
Yes.
How does that compare? Like is that, how does that compare with other numbers, with other CSB regions in the state?
I honestly couldn't, we are one of the smaller CSBs. So you know, again, you, you have region two consist of your Northern Virginia CSB. So I really, I can't answer that question. I don't know.
Curious how, how high the numbers actually get in, in, in other regions, just for comparison.
Right. Yeah. I have never asked that question. So I, I can't give you a, a good answer.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Well, Kim, uh, thank you for being here and for bringing us this update. One of the things, the 40th anniversary was fantastic and the tour of the CIT was very informative and encourage members of the community to come out or call and make an appointment to see you and tour the CSB. It's a fascinating building. It's a secure building for a multitude of reasons, but it serves our community well and we're grateful for the work that you and your team do in, in supporting those that really are in need and it's frequently in a bad place, but you all open the doors and give them options for improvement and we're, we're grateful for that.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you for allowing me to be here.
Next item is Rockbridge Regional Jail Report and Superintendent Derek Alma Road. Derek, thanks for being with us and
Before I begin to give you a quick update, it's been a look, I guess around a year since I've been before you. And so I do want to thank you for your invitation this evening. And it's always an honor and a privilege to be with you here present. And I thank Jim for making sure that I get here on time and all those great things. But I do want to echo a few things that Kim had said. The jail continues to collaborate and to work to be a community partner with all of our enforcement bureaus. Angela's behind me. And so we try to be great partners to our chiefs and our sheriffs and our, and those folks as well as our community as a whole. And so I just want to share the relationship that Community Services Board has with the Rockbridge Regional Jail. I would call us a model, actually. Being on the Association of Regional Jails in Virginia, we see all kinds of gamuts and we have different discussions about the relationships that certain CSBs have within, with other facilities perhaps. And I would, I would truly, I think we're blessed to have Kim's leadership and her team in CSB as, as well as it being across the street, the, just the simple location of being able to walk across the street and speak to a colleague or make a quick phone call and have a impromptu meeting and do that in the benefit of the, of the public is just phenomenal. And you know, I'm glad you asked the question regarding the hospital versus the CIT Center. That's a very important question. And so when someone comes in on their ECO and/or in the TDO, when they achieve the TDO, that goes to the Assessment Center and that Assessment Center. I'm, I'm thankful that it actually came back home in my realm of, of area, just because of the collaboration that we have with CSB. And so not just the working partnership that we have with our work crews and those types of things, but just the professionalism and the integrity in both offices that is shared between those two, as well as, as our enforcement bureaus. We're just, we're simply blessed to, to be a part of this community. So as you well know, Rockbridge Regional Jail is a, is a smaller regional jail in Virginia. It's rated capacity is for 56 and this afternoon it holds 115. So we're at 200 plus percent over capacity, but we can manage somewhere in the neighborhood of around 100, 120, 125 safely before we have to contract bed space out. And so pre-COVID, we, we are now somewhat just above our pre-COVID numbers. COVID obviously caused incarceration to balloon to a point where we were almost busting at the seams and, and trying to find certain bed space, just simply because we weren't moving state responsible inmates into state prisons and those types of things. But we, we are now just slightly above our pre-COVID numbers. So we've, we've seen a decline after the legislation that changed time calculations. And now we're starting to see us start to come back. As you well know, we are in RFP with, and mostly as our contractor to look at a needs assessment for our area for a potential renovation or maybe even a, a potential expansion for our jail, as well as a community-based correction plan, which is very important. And those two items are being discussed now with the jail commission as well as other jurisdictions. And hopefully we may see if our needs are similar and we possibly can partner. And we're close to making a decision on those things regarding, the jail commission certainly is regarding where we're going to fall and where we're going to rest before those proposals are, are put forth to the state. So we're, we're in that process as well. So not only do we incarcerate currently 115 folks, we also monitor as, as a regional facility, we also monitor about 100 individuals in Blue Ridge Court Services, which you're likely familiar with as well. So I call that the river. Those are the inbounds or the pot, potential inbounds into the facility. So I always look at what we have versus what we could have. And so our, our true number, the, the, this evening is 215 people. And so I track that just simply because that is something I can't control. As your superintendent, I can't control that. I just have to, I have to keep the light on and the doors are open. And so those things, those things I monitor quite closely. So again, that's where we are, but in, in regard to number, we see a recidive rate in our building somewhere between 75 and 80%. Now that recidive rate is high. But that's because it's calculated on a flagging system. If a person's ever been, ever been in our facility before for any reason and received a committal, whether it was for an hour or it was for 10 days or greater, they would bet that recidive number re flags. So that is, that's not the actual recidive rate. We track it now based on new criminal behavior. And so that is a much lower number, but that's a, that's a quick reference to the, the recidive we see based on the recurrence of someone coming back into the population. And, and tonight it's at 79%. We are quite busy, much like the, the CSBs as Kim reported, but in 251 days of the year thus far, we have processed 1,471 individuals in and out of our facility. And that could have been just for a minor drunken public, or that could have been for a major felony crime event. So again, that our processing center, our intake and our release are extremely busy in the work that they do. Just in the last 30 days, we've processed 118 individuals. That doesn't mean we have them in jail. It just means that we've processed them in for some form or manner, either in or out. DOC, our relationship is pre-COVID, it's, it's back to where it used to be. We have a wonderful working relationship with our Department of Correction Partners in Richmond, and they just, just this month alone took 10 of state responsible inmates out of the local facility. So they are taking them as fast as they certainly can process them in. Now that's actually better news than we had before COVID. So and so, you know, very happy with that relationship. We also had workforce challenges since the last time I reported, just mainly like any other employer in Virginia. I am happy to report to you tonight, we are fully staffed and have been for quite some time. So we're back up to where we should be and where we need to be. And, and we are accepting applications simply because we just never know when that turnover could occur. So we, we, we still are processing those types of things, but we are fully staffed as of this report. Our environment and I, I, this is something new that I track, but I track an environment or viral rating of our facility. And this, and this evening we are rated at excellence. So we have no, we have no viral mitigation cases in the building. So our inmate population is relatively healthy and doing well. And so is our staff for that matter. So one of the things that I'm most proud of, I'm the probably the biggest advocate outside of my jail commission and the support that they provide is our programs, our jail programs, our work release, our trustee work program, our workforce, our, our programs in general, our substance abuse programs, the things that we partner with, with CSB and other folks. And so I ran some numbers for you tonight and I want to close with those numbers. We through the support of the jail commission and the community itself as a whole, as well as the boards and councils, we developed a program called Rockbridge Regional Jail Industries Program. And so it's much like a trade school, but we are actually teaching skillsets for inmates who are willing to certainly it's volunteer, they, they, the, the class is open to them. It doesn't cost them anything. It's indigent based. And we provide this program to retool them, to give them a better opportunity than the opportunity that brought them to us in the first place. And so we're trying to change the ideology and trying to change some of their thought process and, and let them know that there's a better world out there. And it, it involves working and being responsible and those types of things. And so again, this program has exceeded my expectations beyond measure, but I wanted to give you some numbers this evening. So we opened our doors. First of all, the building that we built was inmate constructed. So we built it completely on inmate labor and skillset labor within our facility, because all of our supervisors have independent skillsets that they teach. So collaboratively with our inmate population, teaching them a skillset, we built the building. But since May 15th, we opened our doors to start training. On May the 15th, the jail industries program has cycled 188 students or participants through its doors. Now, some of those are dual enrollment, obviously. But still 188 folks in some type of class or educational program. And again, some of them are dual enrollment. 59 of those participants have received their first aid CPR AED certification. So that's a requirement. That's one of the things that I wanted folks to have as part of their life skillset. It's always good to, I mean, that's just a good thing to have. It's kind of like learning how to swim. If you can swim, it's a great thing. So again, that's one of the prerequisite requirements to be in the program is to get your CPR, AED and first aid training. And then we do a, a shop and work environment safety curriculum where it teaches them about just generalized safety, work safety, things that they can anticipate in the community or in, in another employment where they go and work. And so we've had 53 have received their program orientation certifications on those as well. We have in, we also provide, I'll try to get all these together. We have carpentry one, carpentry two, we have general basic electric, basic plumbing, we have welding and welding two, and then we have peer support. And so 30 have completed carpentry one and today was our first class of carpentry two. And so we haven't got into our welding classes yet, but we've had three enroll thus far. Our ratio to men to women, because it's open to our general population is 50%. We have as many women attending class. And as, as we do men, even in some of the harder skillsets that you just wouldn't think that that would be the norm. But I have come to understand that in my business, we, there is nothing normal. It's different every day. So anyway, I guess one of my greatest, I think one of the greatest accomplishments was that we were able to hire a, a second chance employee who serves as our industry's skill instructor. And he has done a marvelous job, but we also, because of his past history, we, we put him through with partnership with Kim and her team, we put him through peer support training. And he became a peer support counselor. And today, as of today, I talked to him right before I came over, we've had 43 enrollees in peer support. And they are either currently enrolled or they're following through with enrollment upon departure or returning to society through the CSB. So this is huge. These are numbers that we've never seen before, certainly in my tenure with you guys. And so we are very, very proud of the industry's program and those things that we do, but most proud of our relationships with our chiefs of police, our sheriffs, the jail commission as, as well as CSB that we're just, we're simply blessed to have the programs and, and the opportunity here in this, in this general area that we do. So that's my report. I will be glad to field any questions that you guys have regarding the jail or anything that I've previously mentioned.
Derek, thanks for being with us. Quick question, the training for the carpentry and plumbing, are you partnering with Mountain Gateway or any other local, or is this all under roof at your place?
It's cer, it's under roof currently, just because our instructors have those skillsets. And you know, when we talk about electricity and plumbing, we're teaching them that, you know, cold's on the right, hot's on the left. You know, we're not into the weeds per se in certain skillsets, but we teach them the very basics. But again, now welding, you know, our, our instructor has a state certification through all kinds of welds and different types of skillsets in welding and different forms of welding. So when we have that type of skillset in the staff, we do teach a little deeper into that skillset.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Alexander, go ahead.
Do you have students who have taken or plan to take all of those training opportunities?
They, they're open, the enrollment ability is open. It will, obviously it depends on how much time they stay with us. Some, some folks may be in say, let's say carpentry one and already enrolled in carpentry two and have taken their prerequisite classes. And for some reason they, they, they term out or they bond out or something like that. So that, that does hinder whether they make it into the secondary classes. But if, if they're with us, they, they have the ability to, to go through all of them if they wish.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Do you track what the average length of time that somebody spends at, at the jail?
Yeah, that was the same question was asked me today. So I think I'm going to need to go back and get that data, but I don't have, I can give you a guestimate, but it would be the best guestimate. It just really depends on criminal history, past behavior, those types of things that could hold them in, in their bond status and, and you know, so sentenced inmates, you know, are, I would say the average is anywhere from 18 months or greater. But pre-trial inmates or state responsible, or excuse me, local responsible inmates that are pre-sentence or awaiting trial. It could be, certainly it could be until they go to trial or it could, they literally could come in the door and be bonded and, and, and go home within 48 hours.
The other question I had was for the Rockbridge Regional Jail Industry Program, do you track with the do you track uh, what the recidivism rate is for somebody entering that program versus just the, you know, that somebody that doesn't enter that program?
So today, unless I have missed the boat somewhere today, those inmates who have participated in that program in one form or fashion, and some who have participated, regardless of the length of stay and their length of stay in that program, they have not returned.
Mr. Smith.
Um, recidivism, actual recidivism you said was seventy-nine percent?
That's the, that's the current recidive, reciditive rate that is attached to the number of bodies I have, the hundred and fifteen that are assigned to the jail tonight. So
Regardless of how long ago.
Correct.
What, can, can you put a number on the realistic or?
So we are closing twenty twenty-two now for the actual reciditive rate based on a new criminal behavior. Because this flags whether they've ever walked in the door before.
Right.
And so new criminal activity is what we, we, we have a report that we build on our own, and we have to dissect that report based on criminal charges su- such as a probation violation. So there's, there may not be a new crime committed, it may be simply a failure to, to meet probation criteria and they get violated. So we, we have to take all those out as they come in. So it takes us, it takes us quite a while to put all that data together, as you can see, because all of those individuals that I previously mentioned, those fourteen hundred plus, they had, they could have multiple charges. We're talking about thousands of charges. A person could have one charge or ten. And so it takes us a while to, to dissect that data to get you an actual number. But we should have that somewhere October, November for twenty twenty-two.
Okay. Um, glad to hear you're fully staffed.
Yes, we are blessed.
What do you attribute? Did you um, implement any strategies to get fully staffed, or, or was something different that you did to, to get those numbers up? Or just that's how it worked out?
Well, I think it's kind of how it worked out, uh, uh, but I also believe it's just to the credit of the folks that work there and the relationship that we share from the top down and the bottom up, um, and how well we communicate with each other. Uh, the willingness of the commission to support staffing initiatives that we've developed. And so I think that's been a huge uh, impact on, on our ability to, to keep that, that current.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You mentioned that there are a hundred and fifteen uh, inmates right now?
Yes, sir.
Um, how many of those would be state inmates? Cause you mentioned ten were taken recently into the
So we, we're tracking now as of this evening, we're about eighty-four point nine percent of our current inmate population is state responsible, meaning they're pre-trial. Now of that difference to the hundred, those, some of those state responsible inmates, we've assigned to a work detail or a work release. And so we've requested the state to hold them because they're here in the community working for an employer or that type of thing. So that, that state, that, that number, that twenty percent or, or a little less would be actually less if we were not working those inmates.
And so I noticed in the budget that might finally be passed in Richmond, increases per DM by a dollar.
So
Had a game changer.
It's not really
It's a joke of a question.
Yeah.
I know you've asked every year, there's an ask for a more realistic uh, per DM uh, increase.
Right.
But does that help, I guess, when there, when eighty-four percent are considered state inmates? I guess it does help a little.
So it does, because what you're gonna see, if, if the, if this budget proposal and change passes, you're gonna see a per DM increase on the local responsible inmates. They did it on the state responsible inmates.
Okay.
Several years ago.
Okay.
So your SRIs, you're already receiving, I believe, fifteen dollars a day for those guys. Um, this will increase this number up a dollar, but it's for your SRI. So actually, yes, it will, will, we will receive or see more revenue based on our current ratio. Um, but it's, it's not much, but we'll see it.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Gotcha, couple more questions. Um, the work skills training program, how many years has it, has it existed?
So the jail industries program, we, we launched May the fifteenth of this year.
Okay.
Yeah, so it took us about a eleven months or so to, to get up to speed, get our building ready and those types of things.
That's great, sounds like you're doing great work. And um, it was, it was related, the second question I had was related to that, um, that, that might be it, that
That's okay, if you think about it, give me a call.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
The, the trustee program.
Yes, ma'am.
Are those um, work assignments where you find work sites that are best suited for the situation that they're in? Or can they go back to where they were previously working to work?
They, they can, so that's an actual, they're really not trustees, they're called work, they're, they're work release uh, inmates.
Okay.
So work release is what would, so if, for instance, I'll use myself as an example. If, if I'm working in, in, in the community and I commit a criminal act and I get incarcerated and my employer is willing to work with me through that incarceration process and retain me uh, and the judge uh, and, and I meet all the criteria through, from the, from the bench all the way to the, through the jail system. Um, then I can go back to my employer and work as a work release.
Okay.
Okay, uh, I have to be sentenced to do that, but I, I can go back and work as a work release. But we also have multiple work facet programs. We have trustee work program, we have trustees that work inside and on campus, they never leave campus. Um, and then we have workforce, which work for our workforce supervisors, they're under the gun and they go out and work in the community in crews, uh, and you'll see them throughout. Uh, then, and, and Kim spoke to that in regards to the folks that are over there on the, on her campus uh, doing certain work. And we partner with VDOT and we partner with other local municipalities to, to utilize their services.
For work release, do judges allow that very often here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's uh, very prominent here. Uh, it's um, and it's, the, the issue with work release um, is not the fact that there's not work out there for them to do. It, the big issue is transportation, uh, getting them to and from the job. And sometimes we can be able to facilitate, we're able to facilitate that and sometimes we're not. And if, if the employer struggles with that, that's a, that's a big, big problem sometimes. That, that can cause us a hurdle, sometimes we can't cross.
Right.
So we, we just move them into another program. It doesn't prohibit them from working.
Derek, you mentioned that you're fully staffed, and you also mentioned uh, like a thousand plus intake um, that, that you have. Uh, what, what's the number, now that you're fully staffed, what's the number of folks that you have?
Of forty-six.
Forty-six. Gotcha. I recalled the question, um, is uh, is uh, is any uh, inmate able to participate in the uh, in the jail industries program, um, or is there, is there a capacity?
Um, there's not, there's a capacity and class of size, just because we have to have an officer present because they're in general population. And uh, sometimes their charges, given the nature of their charges, would preclude them from, from the program.
Okay.
Simply because of the risk. It's a risk assess, we do a risk assessment on every, every participant.
Thanks. Very good, Derek, thanks again for being with us and updating, and thanks for the works that you and your team are doing and uh, the jail board. I know is working very closely with you and, and the team to en- enhance and uh, look at our operations. It's a, a tremendous um, responsibility in the community and, and uh, glad that you're there and
Thanks.
fostering it through, so
Absolutely, appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, next item on our agenda is an update on the city's ARPA allocation. And we have Ms. Jen Bell. Welcome, welcome.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to provide you with a brief update on the city's ARPA allocation. So the city of Lexington, as we've discussed before, was allocated nine million one hundred seventy-one thousand six hundred forty-six dollars. And all funds have been received by the city. On April first, twenty twenty-two, the treasury um, took, put into effect its final rule. And part of this rule allowed localities who received less than ten million dollars to use their allocation for general government services. The flexibility that was allowed under this new final rule has allowed the city to recognize as revenue um, just over four point eight million dollars in FY twenty-three. And we anticipate recognizing the remaining four point three million in FY twenty-four. And the ability to use ARPA funds for general government services has allowed the city to free up funds that otherwise would have been used for salaries to be used for important capital projects. In FY twenty-three, for example, we were able to complete bridge repairs um, to around two million dollars. And implement the WNL master meter MOU, which um, total cost was closer to eight hundred thousand, but we used five hundred thousand of the funds that were freed up from the ARPA allocation. In FY twenty-four, we plan to use a million dollars for additional sewer lining projects. And council had previously um, voted to contribute three hundred eighty-seven thousand nine hundred eleven dollars to the capital improvements fund, um, just for projects to be determined. Um, so this presentation is really just for informational purposes and meant to be supplemental to our Davenport presentation we had um, a couple of weeks ago. No action is requested at this time. However, the city manager and I would recommend that the remaining five point two million dollars of ARPA funds be set aside for upcoming capital projects that will be needed with the utility fund. I'm happy to take any questions.
Members of council, have any questions for finance director?
I'll, I'll ask one, so since all of it is being designated for capital projects, basically, none of that ARPA money is showing up in our uh, fund ba- our surplus at the end of FY twenty-three?
There will be, at the end of FY twenty-three, part of it will show up as surplus. It'll be just a, a one-time surplus because in FY twenty-three, we only allocated, was it two point three, two point eight million? That was really earmarked for projects, so the remaining four, so four point three minus two point eight, one point five million will show up as part of the surplus.
Okay, that's what, thank you.
You're welcome.
And, and just remind me, I may be off base here, but the um, uh, but the proposed renovations of city hall, um, I think we'd back down to a number of like three and a half million and
Yes, I think that was, I think we had three point two in the CIP.
Okay, and that, um, we have cash to complete or would be looking at a loan program?
We would likely be recommending a, a loan for that.
Okay, very good. Any other questions for the finance director?
So essentially, just when we met a couple of weeks ago with Davenport, and we talked about the next five to ten years and the, you know, potentially nine figures worth of capital projects that might be coming our way with high school jails, you know, utility fund, wastewater treatment, et cetera. Um, sliding this five point two million dollars, almost five point three million dollars to the utility fund will, will help them come back to us? Essentially, I mean, they gave us this presentation, and that was one of the things we, I said, is any of the ARPA money in this? And the answer was no.
Right.
It left me saying, wow, this is a wonderful presentation by Davenport, but we're kind of missing a valuable five point three million dollars that's gonna help us pay for all of the things that we're talking about right now. So does this, if, if we nod our heads or if we take your recommendation, I, do we just get, we're gonna get more accurate, better advice from Davenport? Because the advice we received a few weeks ago wasn't a complete picture of our finances, am I right?
After that meeting, we did follow up with Davenport, um, and we shared this plan with them. Um, and they, when we were initially working with them to set forth the, the presentation that they shared with you, um, we had asked them not to specifically recommend uses for our ARPA funds because the city manager and I thought that we'd like to be the ones who, who recommended to you how we use it since we're intimately involved on a day-to-day basis. Is that fair to say, Jen?
Well, the other thing was, it was only dealing with the general fund at our last presentation. And as we indicated, we'd like to see and suggest council put that money into the utility fund. Davenport, if you recall, will come back to city council probably just after the first of the year, as they consult with the MSA and bring some numbers to you about the needs in the utility fund, and then also how we would fund those needs. ARPA would be a very um, significant part of that funding.
Okay.
The uh, five million dollars uh, plus that's not designated, is there a deadline that, that has to be spent by or?
No, because um, in the, in the federal government world of ARPA, we've already designated that we're going to use all of those funds for salaries for general government administration. So we'll have that done well ahead of the deadline.
Okay.
And then it, when it frees up other money that we would have used for salaries, we can spend that um, as, as council deems necessary.
On the other hand, just kidding. Jen, thank you for being with us, and uh, thanks for updating that. It's uh, uh, good, good to have uh, pots of money to uh, be concerned and figure out how best to, to utilize. Uh, next item on our agenda is public hearing, item six point one uh, for consideration of requests from Sarah Dudley to allow dwelling unit on the first floor of two twenty-one South Main Street, located in the C-one zoning district. Arnie, welcome and walk us through.
Good evening to you all, I do not have pots of money in excess of a million dollars. I do have a staff report for you about a land use request for a conditionally used permit for Sarah Dudley for the property of two twenty-one South Main Street. And on the bottom of your first page of the staff report, you see a picture of the front of the building. And as you're familiar, in the C-one zoning district, we allow residential uses by right on the second and higher floors, but on the first floor, it's a conditionally used permit. And there are use and design standards specifically that any use or residential use on the first floor shall be shielded by office or retail space or a lobby that maintains a commercial appearance. If you flip over to the next page, you see that the property is a long skinny parcel. When you look at it from South Jefferson, you think it may be an alley, but it's actually a long skinny parcel with both frontage on to South Jefferson and South Main Street. And the picture on the top of that page shows the back of the building from South Jefferson Street. Um, perhaps most illuminating for you is the floor plan that Sarah's provided on the last page of the staff report. On that floor plan, you see that there, um, the bottom of the page would be South Main Street. So as you're looking at it from South Main, you would enter into the buildings, into a reception area, there's office space, conference room, and then some restrooms. And then there's a separation between that space, which is the commercial office space and the portion that is outlined or highlighted in yellow, that I believe was a um, studio, an artist's studio of some sort, and may have been vacant for a period of time. So it's not as though we're now gonna have retail space or commercial space or office space transitioning into residential on the first floor. This is space that was not used for commercial purposes um, previously, and it will have access completely in a hundred percent from Jefferson Street and not in any form or fashion through the office space from South Main Street. So it does meet our criteria that it be shielded by commercial or retail or lobby space from the main street, in this case from South Main. Um, as always, you have the conditions for issuance for a conditionally used permit, and that's on page three of five of your staff report. And you've seen those before, so I won't go through those in any detail. Planning commission did hold a meeting on August tenth, and they made a recommendation that's unanimous for approval of the first floor to be, a portion of the first floor to be utilized as a residential unit. We only had one inquiry, as I recall, from a neighboring property owner. And again, it was more of an inquiry to see what was being proposed and not a statement um, for or against in any way. That's all I have for presentation, happy answering questions.
Thank you, Arnie, members of council, have any questions? Arnie, two, a couple of questions, um, one in the diagram that's uh, I think you said Sarah provided. It shows steps, are those steps going to a second story or going to a basement?
I believe there's a basement in there and contractors are leasing the basement space.
Okay.
And the, she's already also fortunately contacted the building official and the fire marshal who have done a currency inspection in the floor between those two spaces is um, a concrete floor, as I remember, so there's no separation issues or life safety issues. So there is space under at least a portion of the building in the lower floor that will not create any issues for the residential space that's being proposed.
Gotcha, and then the property from the back of the building to Jefferson, could that be built upon at this point or?
It could, in the C-one zoning district, we do not have setbacks. So you have the ability in C-one to build out It could. In the C one zoning district, we do not have setbacks. So you have the ability in C one to build out to your property lines.
Okay.
Then there would be some questions um access and how the building would function and whatnot. But yes, um as long as you meet all the rest of the criteria, there would be the potential for building across that entire property.
But in the event, uh Sarah or some future uh property owner wanted to build on there, it could negatively impact this or the the function of this being uh uh Airbnb or residential.
Correct. In some way, you would still have to provide access out to a public way. And I don't know what that intervening new space would be, but if residential stays in the center of the building or center of the property, there's still got to be some form of egress.
Gotcha. Very good. I'm not positive. I think once upon a time, that may have been a darkroom for uh the photography studio that was there when I was much younger.
Andre.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Just to.
So how do contractors get to the basement?
Oh, as far as I know, they park in the back um and then there's a set of stairs. It's not really, or a door that's not really all that apparent because the building is so far from where I took the photograph on the sidewalk of South Jefferson Street. But there is access for them from the back of the building.
Okay.
Very good. Are there no other questions uh for Arnie? I would like to open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone here who would like to speak to this issue. Not seeing anyone that uh has a desire to speak to this. I'd like to close the public hearing at eight oh four and ask for council's uh consideration.
I move to approve conditional use permit number C U P twenty twenty-three dash zero three to allow the rear portion of the first floor of the building located at two twelve South Main Street in the C one zoning district to be used as a residential dwelling unit with the following condition. The uses and layout of the first floor of the subject building shall be in substantial compliance with floor plan dated July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three and included in the application.
Second. And I'll just add two twenty-one South Main Street. I think you said two twelve.
Oh, you're right. Yeah, right.
Just, just to confirm.
Correct that.
Now, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Uh hearing none would ask for roll call vote. Mr. Allagood?
Hi.
Mr. Smith?
Hi.
Mr. Betts?
Hi.
Mr. Ziegler?
Hi.
Ms. Strong?
Hi.
Ms. Alexander?
Hi.
And motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Dudley, and good luck with your improvements and operation of your building. Uh next item is consideration of minutes that were in your packet, August uh third regular meeting and August twenty-first uh work session. Unless there are any objections, we will approve those as presented. No objections, they are approved. Uh next item is citizens' remarks and comments. Uh no one has signed up, but is there anyone who would like to address council this evening? Hearing none, I will close the citizen's remarks and comments and uh move to the consent agenda. And ask for council's consideration of the items. And just a reminder, nine point two has been pulled from this list.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Uh roll call vote. Mr. Ziegler?
Hi.
Mr. Smith?
Hi.
Mr. Allagood?
Hi.
Ms. Strong?
Hi.
Mr. Betts?
Hi.
Ms. Alexander?
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Uh item of nine point two um would ask for council's consideration on this item. And uh to be clear, the recommendation uh from staff is a denial of the request of street closure by Randy Scott of Heritage Hall on Saturday, September thirty. And actually, I'd ask uh city manager if you can give an update to this request, because I think something something changed since the uh actual uh printing of the agenda.
Well, there's two issues here. One is this is a recommendation to city council. So we have not said they have to pay a fee. We recommend they pay a fee to recover the cost. You ultimately make that decision, of course, and we're recommending denial because they want to do it for free. We're saying, let's not do that. Now, I think the chief has, is it two hundred forty-some dollars, chief? Two hundred seventy dollars is our cost, just for information. When the applicant was made aware of that, they considered it and said, gosh, we can't, we can't pay for that. And our police off, our officers did say, look, um if you don't shut down the streets and just do your um activity on the sidewalk and obey the traffic laws and stop at the lights and don't walk out in front of vehicles, we're not going to be there. You can just go ahead and do it on your own. So ultimately, they made the decision, if you deny this, as we recommend, they'll just do it on the sidewalk. When they get to a uh traffic light and says, don't walk, they won't walk. When they go past the street with a stop sign, they'll hopefully yield for cars. If cars are coming, and the cars will yield for them. Uh so they'll just obey the normal traffic laws and procedures of any pedestrian on the sidewalk. And that's how they will do their event or hold their event, their fundraiser. But we still nonetheless do recommend denial of this petition because we believe we should recover these costs. That's important. We've had those conversations um for new events because of the um cost in overtime to police in this um issue, but also some other services, public works and others, that if they're not going to pay, then uh we'd recommend that the city not uh taxpayer not fund these private events and activities. So that's our recommendation, but they will apparently hold it if you do deny.
So I just want to clarify, um you are only recommending that they pay?
Wha- what we're saying that-
Kind of like, do we recommend anyone else pay? I mean, why, why this group?
If they're a new activity.
So do we have a list of grandfathered activities?
We, I don't believe we have a list, but if they did it last year, they're grandfathered. There was conversation back in two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two about this issue and basically from an administrative standpoint, when we bring these to you, and this is really the first one, we're we're saying please deny this. We're recommending denying because in, on behalf of the taxpayer, we shouldn't spend taxpayer dollars for these particular activities.
So I feel maybe that's our failing then, that we are not giving you the tools to do anything more than a recommendation to a group that wishes to raise money for Alzheimer's awareness. Um, we should then pass a policy that says activities that were held in the past are grandfathered and won't be charged and new activities will. So that you have a true policy that you can share with folks that wish to do events. And then we could put it online where they fill out their request for a parade or permit since it says nothing about that there could be a recommendation or there will be a charge for services. You know, if I was planning a a walk for Alzheimer's awareness and I knew that there were street closures a dozen times throughout the year for private parties, uh trick-or-treating, parades for all number of groups, Mardi Gras, you name it. And I then said, hey, wow, we're going to raise money for Alzheimer's awareness uh and, you know, nonprofit. And they put a committee together and they go and they submit their application and then they're told, eh, if if you don't pay us two hundred and forty-six dollars, we're going to recommend denial. And they're the first group that's ever been recommended to pay. I feel like that's our failing, I guess, that we don't have a policy that we can stand behind. So I kind of feel bad um the position that that we're in, that we've put you in, that we might have a two million dollar surplus in FY twenty-three and they're raising money for Alzheimer's awareness. And it's a two hundred and forty-six dollar charge. Um, I I feel bad. I think it puts us in a bad position.
Does the city, my thoughts. Does the city cover the cost on the other, on the other grandfathered um events?
We do, yes.
Okay.
So this did start a a year or so ago when we did have an event. Somebody wanted a street closed for a personal party and we did charge them.
And we didn't charge them this year.
And then that we were told it was minimal amount of work on their part. But this, this is street closure. I mean, that was just a little block. And th- these are streets throughout the city. I do have an issue with, I I love all the, all the fundraising. I think it's, it's, it's great. But we have a lot of these walks and races now to the point that it is becoming a burden on the police department. And we also have Woods Creek Trail. I mean, could some of these organizations start at Waddell and go down the trail and end at Jordan's Point and we not have to close any streets to do it? And that's why, I understand that you want a written policy and you don't want to make these, this group the first, but I think we have to start somewhere and.
I completely agree. I completely agree. And most of our street closures are for social events. Um, and so that's, that's puts us, puts me personally in an awkward position. And sure, I would love to work with Heritage Hall to say, cut through the back of your property to Brubaker Field and a walking track. Uh, you know, and and knock out your, your walk uh in a beautiful park and on a, on a track. Uh, that, you know, but if they don't want to do that, that's up to them. So I just feel like we have been talking about this and I agree, we should, if people want to throw a party and close a street down so they can have a cookout and have a band in the middle of the street, I mean, do we extend that opportunity to everyone in the whole city? I think that they should be charged for that personally, if it's a private party that is not open to the public.
I agree.
Uh and so I think I'm all for charging for certain services of of L P D and public works, especially, heck, we've got an event Thanksgiving morning that that could require, you know, that could require five or ten police officers to be on duty uh on a, on a holiday uh for five hundred or or more runners. Um, those are not insignificant costs, not just monetarily, but to the lives of our police officers. So I believe we should, we should recoup some cost. I just think we should push it over the goal line of having a policy and put it on the permit request so that we are not having our city manager recommend that they pay. And then they, you know, I, so I I just think that maybe it's our failing that we need to get that done with a policy that so maybe that's a goal.
I, I agree with you. Uh I think that if this is the first occurrence of this happening, um, we should have the policy put in place and then hold to it after, after that. Uh and I think if we cover the cost of other events, we should cover the cost of this event and put a written policy in place um in the future and stick to it. Uh but I think in this case, if we cover the event for, or cost for other events, we should consider covering the cost for this event this, this time.
Yeah, I I agree that we need to make a decision about this tonight. But at the same time, we need to get it on the agenda to have this discussion about uh a a policy to been put in place moving forward so that we know, we, we know about where we need a police presence, where we need the police to actually close streets or where we have public works to close streets because that's manpower, you know, br- that, that's paid for by us. But we need to decide what do we pay for and what is it that we don't pay for?
I think in the past, we've had this discussion and we drew a line and said, we're going to start charging for these because you, you can't say two hundred and forty-six dollars for that walk until you know what that walk includes. And we've given the discretion to our city manager and our police chief to analyze the situation and see what it should cost or may cost. In their professional opinion, some instances closing the street that's perhaps a dead-end street, didn't really have a tremendous amount of expense and there maybe two, you know, other than residents, no cars travel on it anyway. And we didn't, and they chose not to charge. This circumstance is unique in the fact that it's a fundraiser for Alzheimer's. It's also unique in that the city manager said, you may have your walk, but this is the fee. And they said, we choose not to pay that. And based upon that, it should have perhaps been withdrawn instead of denied. That's semantics perhaps or tomatoes and tomatoes, but we haven't denied anyone their efforts to have a fundraiser or to walk the streets of Lexington. But if you're going to close the streets, close intersections that people are using, I I would recommend that we continue to leave it up. We have a policy. It's not written and adopted, but because I think if we do that, then we need to take it a step further and then figure out what's it cost for Main Street? What's it cost for Jefferson? What's it cost if you want Woods Creek? You got to access it somewhere. And so all of a sudden, our policy, where where do we stop in defining it and not allowing our professionals to do what they have done at their discretion?
I think it's important to give the public proper notice so they can calculate the cost. And I, in this case, it does not seem that applicant was aware what the cost would be. Until, until they asked.
Will you, until we know what your uh ask is going to be, not, not every walk takes the same path.
I, I understand.
Okay.
But.
So, once they said, we would like to do this walk, our chief and others said, this is what the cost associated with, with it will be.
Is it clear that there is an associated cost? It it's, if you didn't call up and and ask about it, would the public have been properly noticed that there is uh a cost for uh these services?
No, as Councilmember Ziegler said, there's nothing on the application or online.
And I, and I think if it was on the application and we should put it on the application, um I, I would agree with denying this request. But seeing that it's not on the application, uh I do believe that uh that would provide proper notice if it was on the application, not being on the application, uh I think that we should approve it if this is the first instance of this happening.
I, I would agree that we should put it on the application from now on. We have already charged other people for closing a street. Uh and it wasn't on the application. We've had this discussion at least twice in council meetings. So I I don't, I I have no problem with denying this and explaining to them what the situation is and that that do have options as far as choosing a different path. Um, but yeah, I I do not thi- I think we should either charge them or we deny it. I don't, I don't see this as being a problem, but I, I do agree that we should put it on the application that there may be a fee charged for any kind of closure.
W N L didn't hold their mock convention parade last year because they only held, hold it once every four years. So it wasn't held last year. Uh will we charge for them?
Haven't crossed that bridge yet, obviously.
I think we owe you a policy so that you know what to do. That's all, that's a failing of us. That's all I'm saying. I'm taking responsibility for this because I agree, we should charge for city services. Uh L P D's time is not free. Um, we, we know that. So I think, um, you know, I I I'm going to make a motion to approve this request. Uh and as part of that, that we get a policy in place and allow the public to comment on it. So the public is aware of what we're, what we're doing. And then we add it to the application and people will have had their opportunity to comment.
I'd like to say one more thing. Um, this is a hundred people, uh which is a sizable, potentially, which is the, which is a sizable amount of people. And if they are crossing uh on crosswalks, even if they are going down the sidewalks, um there are, there is going to, that potentially could cause some traffic issues with that amount of people. Um, and for that and the reasons uh that I have also specified earlier, I would second that motion.
And to next point, a couple of years ago, we had a parade scheduled uh for Main Street and the permit was uh revoked uh before the parade. And the group of individuals still decided to walk down the sidewalks and they did not yield to traffic control devices. And traffic was snarled. It was not a successful event, if you will, uh when we said just stay on the sidewalk because while they were on the sidewalks, they ignored everything and it it was not safe for, for vehicles or the pedestrians. We have experience.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment?
Please. One is, I would say there is a policy in place. Now, we didn't inform the public, as you noted, that there may be a charge. I will agree with that and that's a failure administratively, myself and staff. But the policy is when we get a request from the community for an event, we make a recommendation to city council. One of the factors that we have administratively considered is there should be cost recovery for these types of events. Now, frankly, and again, there were conversations had. The sentiment that I read in the conversations from city council was let's not charge for events that are currently being held. It's a little difficult to try and tell in uh individuals, groups that have had an event for twenty years that we're now going to be charging. That was a sort of a sensitivity that I sensed from, from you. Uh, but the policy is whether there was a charge or not, we rec- made a recommendation. And so if you put another policy in place, what would it be? To deny automatically if there was a cost? Or still to bring it to you with the recommendation of either denial or approve based on their ability to pay or desire to pay?
Well, we, we give you the tools that for a, if, if a member of the public wishes the architectural review board to review a sign, they pay a dollar amount so that it is reviewed. If they choose- they pay a dollar amount so that it is reviewed. If they choose not to pay that dollar amount, it's not reviewed. Uh, 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 I'm, I think we put it in here that there will be a charge for, for street closures. So if, if they, if you work it up and they choose to pay it, then you'll bring forward it, forward the recommendation to city council because our ordinance says that city council closes streets. Uh, the city manager has jurisdiction in times of emergency. We've done, dealt with that before on Halloween. Uh, and, and so, you know, I, I, I think again, that's why I think we have failed you without having a policy. We owe you a policy. Our ordinance on, on charges for services in the city is 10 pages long. And we can put in there that we will charge, uh, relevant expenses for public works, LFD, LPD, whatever it might be. And that's fair. And I think our, our public will respect that. I think our business owners will respect that because our business owners sometimes wonder about the number of street closures without the city recouping any costs. Uh, so I, I think, I think that's something that we can push over the goal.
And I, I think what we can look at doing is saying as of this date, uh, whatever the date the policy is, this is at, this language is added to the policy, uh, there, there will be costs associated with road closures for, for new, for, for new applicants. And just put a date and just say there will be costs associated and just on the application and just make it upfront that there's costs associated.
I feel like we're micromanaging a bit and, and I also don't, there may not be a cost. If it's closing off a cul-de-sac, it may be telling them, go to public works and pick up the cones. We'll loan them to you and you close off the street for a certain amount of time. I think having it on the application that there may be a cost associated with this is sufficient. But I feel like we've already put this policy in place and this, this is not anything new and I have no problems with denying it. I'm sorry to them, but I, but I feel like they have other options to where they could still hold their event and not pay if that's the issue.
I just think it seems like a minimal cost for, for a good event and it doesn't hurt to be clear. So that, that, that's just my position.
Jim, did you say you offered them other solutions?
Well, I was not involved, but in the conversation when, um, Lieutenant Conry was discussing it with them, I understand there was a question or the opportunity was posed that, you know, if we don't come out, if LPD is not on the street blocking intersections, there's no cost. So you can walk down the sidewalk and carry your signs, get your publicity for the event and raise some money and there's no cost to you. And they said, oh gosh, we, we may do that then if city council doesn't approve it. You know, they would, they would certainly like to have the opportunity to have the police block the streets and they could walk without care with their signs and with their, whatever else they're carrying to give themselves some visibility. But if that's not the case, they're going to do it anyway. You know, Mr. Ziegler's got a good point. They may or may not really abide by the traffic laws, but they're, um, making the claim they will. And, and to that point, I would have some difficulty, you know, right now, Main Street Lexington takes the new WNL students up and down the streets in large groups. I'm assuming they're safe, but I don't know that. And we see other occasions too, when individuals, I say individuals, but large groups of individuals for certain activities are walking up and down the street regularly. They may or may not yield at the crosswalks. I, I don't know how we would release that other than to be either there or just by chance see that, uh, that's occurring. And then if you will, warn them that they shouldn't do that, but I, you know, I'd have a difficulty putting some type of rule or policy in place indicating that if you have an event and you don't obey the traffic laws, what are we going to do? Uh, that, I don't think that policy can cover that eventuality, frankly. It's my point.
Yeah, unfortunate. They didn't think about what Relay for Life does, that they have successful, uh, campaigns on, RCHS track or Brubaker track. Thank you.
I think they just had an idea and didn't, uh, not aware that the city charged until they made application. And, um, I, I would go back and, and indicate Nick, a real, arguably we have a policy that we've been following. I'm not sure, uh, what page it may be on in, in anything. But I think the, the suggestion, the idea moving forward, um, to have a disclaimer that there may be a fee for, uh, closing streets or things that are uh, necessary assistance with the police, fire, whomever, um, would be appropriate to have on the application. Um, it, it's not as though, um, pe- people aren't seeking it out until they're seeking it out. And then if you want it to go zigzagging all around town, like the turkey trot or the, uh, yeah, the turkey trot does for Thanksgiving. Um, the number of streets that are impacted, it, it's a real strain on our police department just because the, the actual, um, uh, 5K path crosses so many different streets, but, um, I, I would submit to you, we do have a policy if we need to have it, uh, more definitive. If council, uh, would like to see it more definitive than it is currently, we certainly need to give the city manager direction to write that policy. But, um, I would say for a couple of years, we talked on council about, let's draw a line in the sand. Anybody who's been doing something, you're grandfathered in, but any new, we're going to start charging. And we haven't been extremely consistent with our method for charging, but we have been charging for, I'd say a good two years.
I, I do understand the theory behind it. I do understand what you're saying. I just think that, um, it never hurts to be more clear. Um, and if in this case, I think that if this is kind of the first, I don't know, friction that we've had since the policy was adopted, that maybe we can be more clear and not avoid this again, but maybe consider approving this, uh, this specific instance.
I'd say it may be form over substance. I think there's some folks that have applied, found out what it would cost and have withdrawn. So from that standpoint.
David, did your motion say a new policy or review of the current policy?
I'd love to see the current policy. I, I don't recall in my nine years, but my mind isn't perfect. But I don't recall seeing that policy and voting on it.
I would say it's a policy that wasn't, uh, in writing, it was direction to city staff of, we want to start effective now.
And I do agree on that. We just owe it to put it in writing.
Sure.
And as I've said many times, and you're going to have to hear me say it again, when we involve the public in our decision-making, we make a better decision. And, and so I think that if we can articulate the grandfathered events, whether that includes, uh, a pride parade, Sons of the Confederates, uh, all of our grandfathered parades, all of them, if we can list them, and if you're not on that list, then I guess we're saying that we're going to recommend, we're going to, we're going to charge you. That, I guess that's what we're saying.
And is this separate from our parade policy that we never quite finished or is this?
This is just about charging. The parade policy talked about weapons and what you could carry and, and so on, uh, during, during, during a event.
My, my memory is not so great either, but I think it did articulate expenses associated with it.
I think it did too.
Uh, didn't, didn't get that to the finish line either.
Can you repeat your motion again, please, for me? Or can the city, can the clerk repeat the motion?
I think, uh, it's just made, made a motion to approve this, uh, event for the Walk to End Alzheimer's. Um, and to not charge them $246. And I think that I carried on that, that we would make a policy and put it on the books and advertise that they might, future events could be charged online when they're making application.
That might be, uh, should we break down into two separate motions?
Whatever.
Um, because I, I think procedurally, maybe we should vote on the, okay.
I'm going to call on our attorney to, uh, help us navigate what, what may have been said or what might not have been said and.
I, I, I agree with Mr. Betts. It might be best to separate the motion to deal with the specific issue before, which is the permit application or the waiver, the, the fee request. And then you can separately give a directive to the city manager and staff to prepare a policy. You might want to do those two separately.
Or if I'm wrong, just to publicize the policy.
And that.
Because I could be wrong. Maybe we voted on it in 2017 and I don't remember, but, um.
And that's part of the reason why I would say separate them and, and there might, you might also get into maybe even a work session where you want to have a discussion about what's to be in this policy because I'm not sure everybody's necessarily on the same page about what should be in this policy. So I don't know that you want to mix it with the specific issue of this Alzheimer's walk.
No problem.
I, I would second on approval of this walk specifically.
Yeah. And, and I would say for Jamie's benefit, if we could start with a new motion.
Sure thing. I make a motion that we approve the Walk to End Alzheimer's. I think it was September 30th.
Second. Before we, uh, could you clarify, do we need to acknowledge that all other motions are withdrawn? This is the motion.
Uh, because it went back to David, I think it is fine that he is now.
We, we all understand there's no motion on the floor except approval of, uh, item 9.2. Any further discussion on 9.2?
Due to the, I guess, confusion in the communication of, and we're, I think we're all learning a lot from this of, of how to move forward. But for, if it were a $10,000 cost, I would have a real hard time with a new incident like this, but for $246, God forbid somebody gets hurt. I'm not going to hang my hat on denying a march for $246.
Any other discussion? As for a roll call vote, Mr. Alligood.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler.
Aye.
Ms. Strong.
Nay.
Mr. Betts.
Aye.
Ms. Alexander.
Aye.
Motion carries five to one. And to follow up, um, uh, if it's, uh, if it pleases council, uh, we'll ask staff to, uh, review our city records for, um, a policy and whether or not it was adopted or, or research and come back to us with, um, how we got to this point. That is that suit counsel? Any objections to that? Very good. City manager, need any further instruction on that? Very good.
And you might just check to see if there's overlap with what we do have for a parade policy and, but, you know.
Uh, be more specific, overlap with this policy.
The street closures, I, I thought that I don't remember where we left off with parade. I know we didn't.
Never adopted.
Right. We never adopted what we were planning to. Was there already something on the books regarding parades? I believe so. So that would be, I think because of the street closure issue, I think that may be incorporated in that as well.
Right. Very good. Thank you, Ms. Strong. Uh, next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Uh, update on 201 North Randolph Street. Now calling the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we have made communication with, um, the Clarks, Ms. Shai Clark. They have not several times and they were to, or she was to bring us, um, a plan or in a timeframe for when the demolition would occur of that structure. She has not done so and she further has not fenced it by the time, um, that we'd given her to, um, do that. So our most recent, um, communication was, we're still waiting for that uh, plan as to when this structure would be demolished. And we still insist that she has to, uh, fence it off until it is demolished. Not indicating myself that I would, uh, issue any more violations at this juncture. I want to work cooperatively and positively with them. She has indicated that that's her intent, uh, to demolish the structure. We've waited a few years now to get this far. So I'm not going to try and, um, push the issue and say it's got to be next week or next month, or I'm going to cite you again. I do hope that she, she's been very positive in her reaction and communication. I do hope then that very soon she will come to us and say, okay, here's my plan. So that's where we stand at this point. It's a little, um, ambiguous, but she's made those assertions that she would follow through and we're going to give her the opportunity to follow up in that in the near future. Very near future.
Any questions, city manager? Hearing none. Thank you, Jim. Uh, next reports and communications, Blue Ridge Resource Authority. Mr. Smith.
No report.
Main Street Lexington, Mr. Smith.
Uh, we had our Gateway Triangle ribbon cutting, uh, earlier this week, uh, well attended. Uh, we had, uh, 400 first year WNL students, uh, do their downtown walkthrough on Tuesday. Uh, Christmas parade theme for this year is Home for the Holidays and entry registration will, will open on November 1st. Uh, and downtown trick or treat will be on Halloween, October 31st, from 3:30 to 5 o'clock. And, uh, last weekend we had, according to our downtown businesses, a very successful and well-attended sidewalk sale.
Very good. Home for the holidays. Wonderful. Any questions for Mr. Smith? We remain grateful for all the good work that Main Street Lexington does and Rebecca and the board and all the volunteers that, uh, make things happen. Sidewalk sale was a lot, a lot of fun. Planning Commission, Ms. Strong.
Planning Commission met on Thursday, September 24th. We had two items of business. Uh, conditional use permit application by Lorelei Pisha requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow an educational facility, primary or secondary, or a family home daycare at 10 North Lewis Street was continued at the request of the applicant until our September 28th meeting. And we continued our discussion on accessory dwelling units and should have a draft ordinance soon for public comment. So it's really coming along and we hope that, uh, the public is well aware of this ordinance we're putting together because we would like to have lots of comments and have it, have it fine tuned before it comes to council. So I really do think we, we should have the draft done this month, hopefully.
Terrific. Mr. Betts.
Um, is cottage housing the next, uh, thing that you all are taking up?
That is on our list, right. And that was one of our items we talked about at our last meeting was to review our, our calendar for the next few months or next year and cottage housing is definitely on it.
Um, is it possible for cottage housing to get taken up before, like along with accessory dwelling units or are you waiting until?
We're waiting and actually we were waiting on, um, on somebody who requested a cottage housing ordinance. It was going to provide us some information and I don't know that we got that or at this point that we're waiting on it. But that will be separate from accessory dwelling units.
So, uh, right now the plan is to wait until accessory dwelling units is finished up.
Yes, right.
Uh, it, are you all anticipating finish, you said you're?
Right. I, I think we will finish this month and, and have our public comment and, um, based on, on what we need to do after that, fine tune it and then it'll come to council soon. So yeah, I think we're very close to being done with this.
Excellent. Thank you.
As Mr. Ziegler frequently points out, once we have public input, we have a, a better product and, um, there's certainly been opportunity for public input, um, at Planning Commission because you all have been working on this for quite some time. Um, I, I hope and always encourage the, the idea of not let, uh, perfection sit in the way of progress. So I think your point, um, uh, sensing, uh, expediency would be appreciated to work on. We don't need to create this from the very beginning. There are other communities and, uh, that have had success in, uh, drafting such things and moving this along would be advantageous for the community.
Absolutely. It'd be great to get the accessory dwelling units, uh, finished up and then working on cottage housing just so that we can expand, uh, our available housing options to, you know, to, to this Lexington.
Yeah, please and thank you.
Yeah. And I did notice, I said we met on September 24th. We met on August 24th. Mixed up on my months.
Just, uh, minor details, but why let facts screw up a good story? Um, I shared with a couple of folks, uh, over the past week, but I saw, um, a, a report out of New York City where they've had no Airbnb or short-term rental regulations. Um, and they're starting to impose them because of, uh, things not going well. And, um, uh, many of the things that they're talking about doing, uh, are represented in the policy that we have. So, uh, hats off to council for doing a great job, uh, as we suffered through lots of, uh, discussions and, um, coming up with a better product from public input. Not that everybody in the public agreed with the final decision that was made, but I think it's, um, a, a very workable and functional uh, policy. And I, I wish New York all the, the best and they can find out a good way to do it if they, uh, uh, look at the center of the universe of Lexington. Uh, Regional Tourism Board, Mr. Betts.
Sir, uh, Jane Clark retired on August 31st, 2023. The Director of Tourism position is now posted. Applications will be reviewed beginning on September 15th, 2023, and the position will be open until it is filled. The Regional Tourism Board's next meeting is on September 20th, 2023. No interim director will be appointed. The tourism staff will continue with their current responsibilities. Any questions? Any questions that are, that the current tourism staff are unable to answer can be directed to the chair of the tourism board, Shayna Layman, until a director of tourism is hired. Um, in regards to visitor facilities and office space, a committee was formed, Leslie Ayers, Craig Law, Lawhorn, Nicholas Betts, to consider future location opportunities for Lexington and Buena Vista Visitor Centers. Uh, we're just going to explore what the best location are, is for those, uh, facilities. And, uh, grant opportunity, Virginia Tourism Corporation, V T C, open a micro-business marketing leverage program grant on August 22nd, twenty twenty-three. The application portal will close on September 28th, twenty twenty-three. The grant is open to applicants that are tourism-oriented businesses with less than twenty, with less than 20 full-time employees. V T C recognized destination m- marketing offices, main street organizations and other entities that engage in tourism-oriented small business marketing. Awards are up to 5,000 for small businesses and up to 10,000 for organizations. The program is for shoulder season marketing only during the months of September twenty twenty-three to May twenty twenty-four and must include a lodging component to facilitate overnight visitation. Uh, for more information about this program, uh, you can go to their website. Uh, I sent, uh, Jamie my report and if somebody were to want to, want the link, it will be in the meeting minutes.
Terrific. Um, can you speak a little bit about the, um, I guess the impetus for, uh, the committee, search committee for locations?
Uh, my understanding is there's maybe another potential. I, I'm not, I think we're getting in the beginning stages. There's another po- potential location that may be built, um, that may have a, a different type of space. Uh, the question is, do we need as much, as much space as we currently have in the office, um, you know, because there, I think it is important to have a physical presence personally, and I think that's something we'll discuss as a committee and as a tourism board at large. Um, but you know, how much space you have, what's the best, um, price you can get on the space and just making sure that, you know, we're getting a good deal for the, you know, the funds we're using.
Gotcha. I know in, in past discussions, um, location was paramount and having something in downtown Lexington, uh, was very useful as opposed to a, um, uh, interstate related location that may just become a bathroom facility.
I think there is a discussion about, is another spot in Lexington. Um, I would need to find out more about that to give me an accurate report though on.
Look, look forward to keeping, keeping us posted on that. Do you know how long the leases at the telephone building?
I couldn't say for sure, but I think it's 2025, early 2025.
Sounds right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Quick question. How many, uh, applications have you received so far for the director position?
Uh, I am not sure on that. I believe that we're going to start reviewing, reviewing them on the 15th and then our first meeting on the 20th. I think we're gonna, I guess, see how many we've gotten in by that point. And then kind of how the process, what we kind of decided, uh, at our last meeting was see how many applications come in. And if there's a, a lot of them, we might need a, a, a separate committee to just go through and filter through them. Um, if there's not many, we can probably just discuss it as a, you know, a, a sole, you know, a whole committee and moving forward quicker. Depending on how many applications we get. But, uh, the answer is I'm not sure yet.
And, and Nick, getting far too granular, but, uh, Lexington being the fiscal manager, uh, Robbie and staff are available to the board to assist with this process.
Sir, I bet my understanding is that, uh, I believe we've requested, uh, Robbie to be there on the 20th at our meeting to go through what applications we've received and to help us figure out processes moving forward.
Terrific. Thank you. So I make sure the board knows all the resources it has. Um, I'm sure Rockbridge County's, uh, Spencer is glad to help out as well. It's a very important position in our community. Raro, Mr. Ziegler.
Uh, we met yesterday. Um, we had a full board in attendance, which included a new member from the county. I don't think I shared previously Travis Patterson, uh, senior investigator with the sheriff's office, uh, and a longtime volunteer as a coach and, and supporter of youth, uh, in the whole area for a long time. So Travis will be a great addition. Um, we talked about kicking off our fall sports. Um, one of the issue or one of the things I've shared before is our increased number of football, uh, athletes this fall. Whereas we have 199 right now, we had 161 last year. Um, we had purchased 33 additional helmets that are not inexpensive and that still isn't enough. And we're lucky that, you know, we've got the relationship with Allegheny County when we play football against teams over there and, uh, they've, they're loaning us about 11 helmets, uh, right now. Uh, new helmets, they're fine, they're safe. Um, but it's just, uh, we just had no idea that we would go increase numbers by 38 kids this year over last year. Uh, and there's, there's a process to have your helmets, uh, reconditioned either every year, every, every other year and you, their, their lifespan. And, and so, um, we're really fortunate to have that relationship with Allegheny County. Uh, we're also continuing to take care of a number of fields. We lean heavily on Lexington Public Works, also in Buena Vista and also on the county on the work that they do on their fields. Um, you know, normally the fall is devoted to, and I've shared this before, devoted to soccer and football and cheer, but we're trying adult softball, uh, this fall, wood bat league. Um, and then we're also doing some fall baseball academy, uh, work this, this fall. So that just means taking care of more and more fields. Uh, one of the, um, things that, that's on our agenda is to purchase a utility trailer so that we can transport our Kubota tractor when it is all decked out, no pun intended, with its bucket and, and everything, all the a- attachments. Um, the trailer that we have right now is too, too small and we have to take the bucket on and off, on and off. And that's not a good use of staff time to go through that process and it just degrades the, the, puts wear and tear on it. And so Public Works is Lexington Public Works has, have been helping us transport that tractor a little bit, but we want to see if we can acquire a tractor ourselves and just give us more flexibility to get that tractor where we need it in B V in the county and around Lexington. So that's something that we're, that we're looking at. Uh, big appreciation to Lexington P D. There was a incident at our storage building at Fox Field. There was another incident in that general area, uh, a, a, a week or so ago, and the individual was, was apprehended or caught and, and it looks like that's taken care of. Uh, but we really appreciate that when a police report was filed, followed up on and I think they got the guy. So, uh, thanks to Lexington Police for that. Um, one thing that want to highlight, it is Rockbridge area rec organizations 35th anniversary, uh, this year. Uh, we're not good at celebrations. Uh, we do rec sports, but we want to make that well-known and, and hopefully we get some publicity, maybe in the news gazette. Uh, there's a lot of people in, in Rockbridge County and Lexington that, that helped found Raro and have been a part of Raro. And in 35 years, I can't imagine the, the number of kids that have participate and adults in our programs. So I'll conclude my report, uh, with that.
Thank you, Mr. Ziegler. Any questions for Mr. Ziegler?
Have y'all started putting together a history? Do you have a pretty good history from?
We're going to have a parade where we, uh,
We are charging you.
So I'll tell you, over the years, um, actually, I think we're able to rely on some of the work that actually Doug Chase has, has written about in, in the, in the news gazette, uh, and, and other coverage that we've had at, at important mile markers of our, uh, of our history. I think a few years ago, when we brought Buena Vista into the fold, there was some, uh, there were a few articles at that time about, hey, look, this is, this is a, again, we're going to, you know, an organization that serves the community. So hopefully, um, we can draw on some of those histories and, uh, uh, obviously the news gazette and, and if the advocate wants to write about us too. Uh, but I think Jonathan Schwab, uh, has, has always been a very, uh, reliable, um, journalist that, that covers what's happening. And, and, and I think that maybe we can try to get some publicity about, about that. But if you don't get the newsletter that Chad Coffey, our executive director puts out monthly, um, we'll also put some, put something in, in, in the newsletter that, that's emailed every month, but it's exciting, uh, you know.
It's exciting.
So we're, we're, we're proud of the organization and proud of the support of B V Rockbridge County in Lexington.
You probably even remember your 35th birthday. Some of us on here was so long ago, we, we don't recall.
I haven't, I haven't celebrated yet.
Oh, thanks, Nick. Thank you for that report and, uh, happy anniversary. Uh, threshold, Ms. Alexander.
Nick and I will tag team this one.
All right. Um, Olivia Raines, Central, uh, Shenandoah Plan District Commission, Housing Program Manager gave a presentation a- at our meeting on August 23rd, 2023 at 5:00 PM on the proposed citywide housing condition and infrastructure windshield survey and needs assessment. She outlined the services provided by, uh, C, CSP DC, the, the role it would have in the grant application process and how housing conditions had been identified as a priority for Lexington. She noted a windshield survey would allow for a complete inventory and needs assess, uh, needs assessment of the city's housing units, which could help the city to make an evidence-driven decisions about how to prioritize areas of future investment. She decided how the study would be conducted, uh, explained how the data could and could not be used and provided context as to why C D V G planning grant funds were being used to fund the project. She outlined the draft scope of work for the consultant hired to conduct the survey, which in addition to the actual windshield survey, include an assessment of the city's existing housing initiatives, including meeting with local stakeholders, a needs assessment analysis based on both the data and the public input received from the last two public meetings and, uh, the development of strategies for implementation and a final report and presentation. She demonstrated how the project was in line with C D D G goals and provided a timeline for the planning grant application process. She noted that for the particular grant, D H D C requires a project management team to meet once a month to ensure the project is staying on schedule, meeting all of its objectives and was being overseen by a variety of people with knowledge of Lexington's needs. She identified the current team comprised of herself, her colleague and the CSP DC, Steve Bolster, city, city manager, uh, Halas, plant, city planning director Glazer, city council member Alexander and threshold chair Sands, and indicated the intent was to add one or two additional members with interest in local housing needs. Before opening the floor to questions, Ms. Range encouraged those present to stay involved throughout the process.
And I'll talk about the key takeaways from the question and answer portion of the meeting. There, someone asked about apartments above retail spaces, uh, whether they would be included in the, uh, windshield study and they would be. And, uh, examples of localities that had the work, the windshield survey, uh, were Martinsville and Radford, where Martinsville had their analysis identify areas for investment more so than uh, areas of, of individual properties needing rehab. Uh, the city of Lexington is the grant applicant in, and the agreement would be with, uh, P D C. Threshold will be considered the public-facing arm of the grant and the survey process. Another, uh, comment was about, um, what this will fund. The grant will fund the conditions assessment. It's not funding a, an actual rehab project. Uh, but that part of this process could mean possibly that we'll be applying for an implementation grant for the rehab piece. Uh, rehab projects will take into consideration the income of tenants in rentals, not the income of the owners of the rentals, and that would be during the implementation stage of this process. Grants overall do not target individual homes, but housing in general or other social programs in general for low to moderate income households. Eighty percent of A M I, the annual median income would be in the, for this area would be in the low, uh, forty thousands for a household of one or fifty-seven thousand nine hundred, for example, for a family of four. When we were asked by our former city manager, whether there would be an appetite for the reestablishment of the rental inspection program, if the windshield study identified rental units as a problem, problem area. Um, I did respond, uh, that personally, I would like to see it reestablished, but the challenge, uh, for us, for council is really not having fully trained personnel for those types of inspections. And someone in the, uh, audience suggested that we have that outsourced. So there was mention of, uh, threshold, uh, having done forgivable, uh, forgivable loan program in the past, we talked about how that worked uh, at that time and how homes were rehabbed, um, back in the eighties and nineties. When, uh, asked about the topic of underutilized properties and what about those? We were proudly able to advise that we had already conducted a survey in that regard and we told them about the feedback we received. Uh, this was an opportunity to convey the city's commitment to address housing in many ways, whether it would be a new construction project at Spotswood or V Dot, uh, but also identifying areas in need of rehab, working with property owners of underutilized structures and land and supporting affordable housing efforts as those opportunities arise in the community.
So, so who is doing the windshield survey then? We, we're hiring someone to do that?
There will be, there are a couple of people in the state that they utilize for that and they will be, I hope, will be applying, uh, but as to their interest in doing, uh, the survey.
Okay.
I believe they've already talked to them.
If I'm understanding correctly, I believe threshold is the, the applicant, but then that they're helping us with their application. Am I correct in that?
The city is the applicant.
City is the applicant.
Hmm. And P D C is helping to process the application on through. And they are already aware of people in the state that perform these studies.
Okay.
And they will be in contact with them during this, um, grant phase.
And how do they get salary information then? And that, and that, is that done during the windshield study or that's later at the next phase?
Okay. If there's an implementation of the results of the study.
Yes.
Then there would have to be households contacted to determine what their income is to know whether they qualify for rehab or not.
Okay.
Um, at the presentation they brought, uh, they've, they've done this at a few different cities, uh, like Martinsville, I believe.
And Radford.
Radford. And they had like a packet that showed in what they kind of do. And one of the things they do is they have, um, kind of five different categories from basically like good condition to, to, to dilapidated. And they'll color code it, um, based on what the, what that area, uh, is kind of showing. Like if there's a area that's, you know, in disrepair, it'll be one color versus a, uh, uh, area that's in, in generally good repair would be a, a different color. And that's kind of how they.
And is our understanding that they're not pointing out individual houses? Um, in, in the actual report, they're looking at areas of need.
Okay. And so that may answer the next question. When the W N L students did the, um, study two years ago or three years ago and, and kind of looked at what they looked at a few neighborhoods and what kind of needs they had. And y'all did some surveys that, uh, and I can't remember threshold participated or they just presented to to threshold. Does that information being used at all or?
That was done, I think back in maybe 2017, 18.
It was that long ago?
And we actually did some rehab projects and the priority scene, we sent surveys out to, um, neighborhoods.
Yeah.
And the neighborhoods identified were Diamond Hill, Green Hill, McCorkle area and Walker Street area, I believe.
Right.
And the, the most need at that time, feedback that we received back was more so the, uh, the Green Hill area. And we did do some rehab projects in that area.
Okay.
And we've, um, since then, there were, were less and less people, you know, getting back to us to say that they really had a need. So, um, this has been another route we're taking.
Great.
More fact-based.
Yeah.
It, it was a, um, substantial amount of information, but there was one piece that, uh, went and verified that I heard in looking at qualifying for home repairs, they would look at the resident, not the owner. So if someone was renting, did I hear that correctly?
They would look at the area, uh, of the community that looks like it's in need.
Mm-hmm.
And then, um, I don't know how we will do that. This is far down the road, but once they identify that there's a piece of property in that area that is a rental, then they would look at the, the tenant. then they would look at the the tenant uh and their qualifications based on their income rather than the owner.
Gotcha.
And this would be a set separate from the windshield survey. The windshield survey is its own thing.
Right.
And then this would be a second, I guess, grant or.
It would help us to to determine uh what we're going to do next.
Right.
Which is called an implementation phase, which means implementing what we've learned from the survey.
And the 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 survey is just going to give us data to make uh effective decisions on what needs to be done and what can be done.
What what the options may be for the next steps. Mr. Smith.
And I I attended the meeting and do I recall hearing that the focus on any eventual upgrades or rehabs is is more focused on homeowners and not rental properties, that that it's prioritizing that segment and not the others.
That's that's the goal. Because you know that they are taxpayers and and they are residents here. Um but there are so many rentals in our neighborhoods that if that particular neighborhood is identified, then we're not going to just overlook, you know, those areas that are are rentals.
Uh and I think part of the reason, I guess, what they're saying about using the rent, the renters income was I so that something could potentially be done with with that house if, I mean, that would be a policy decision. But the reason why I on some level, I think at least it makes sense is because if a house gets in such, in certain circumstances, gets in such disrepair that it's no longer usable, then that eliminates some housing stock and could, you know what I mean, displace that person.
Though it's a slippery slope, you know, you fix up somebody's house and then they're going to up the rents on it.
That is exactly the point I brought out, but the.
That was mentioned, yeah.
Now, the first step is the uh windshield uh survey. We'll see what the inventory looks like and next step. So thank you all for uh being on threshold and uh working with that group and uh the P D C to to navigate these ideas. Uh next item, uh Maury Service Authority, Ms. Allagood.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Progress was made at the Maury Service Authority. The wastewater uh treatment plant generator control panel and uh controllers uh have been installed and are fu- fully functioning. The disconnect from uh Dominion Power that was needed to happen while this equipment was uh transitioning uh occurred. And the new equipment has been tested before power was reestablished to know that it works. And so there's a measure of reliability now that didn't exist before. The uh system is is working as it should. So this is a big step. Uh this equipment had been on order for over a year. And it was ordered back during pandemic days. And uh the uh equipment uh came from out of the country. It was one of these things that well, I think Brazil was the source in there. But any event, uh it's uh it's fully functioning and installed. So that's a big step. Uh I had mentioned previously uh the lightning bolt that happened at the water pump station. Uh and some of some of the reporting that was done uh uh misinterpreted what I had said at a previous meeting. I just wanted to correct that. The the lightning didn't stop the pumps, it turned the pump on. And the overflow occurred uh and uh didn't ruin, but it upset the treatment system that uh exists at our drinking water plant. And so to, and it was the first time that had ever happened. Generally, when lightning strikes, things turn off and don't come on. In this particular instance, the quirk was that it actually turned things on. And it was, nobody knew it was there until it came to work the next day. So to remedy the notification process, there are now a series of alarms that have been installed that require uh uh people like, these are alarms that are sent to phones that employees have that have to be acknowledged. And these are automatic type alarm systems that are now in place. So that's a good, that's a good step. So at least people will be noticed and it won't run for twelve hours, eh ten or twelve hours and and cause a problem there. Uh on another matter of the the preliminary engineering reports for the water facilities, the uh final draft is in the process of being prepared, but the uh in between draft, the is scheduled for a presentation either at the end of this month or in October. So we're getting really close. I keep putting it off each time, but the report from the engineering company has been received. And the M S A staff is reviewing it. And so we hope to have the information presented to the localities uh again. But now it's my understanding that maybe by the middle of uh October, we'll see that report presented there. And so things are moving, even though slowly, but these are, these are large steps. And the the money still hasn't been uh adjusted, the estimates are still way up there. So that that part hasn't changed in there. Hopefully, we'll find some new sources of funding, you know, maybe, maybe. End of report.
Mr. Smith.
Have the have the engineers indicated any change in permitting capacity for the water drinking plant?
The uh it's been discussed, first of all. And currently, the water outtake from the river that's that goes to the water, the raw water plant is in a neighborhood of one and a half million gallons.
A day.
A day. And the permits that exist right now were grandfathered in and will allow up to four million. So there's plenty of room currently. The question mark that the engineers are advising M S A about is through the review process that we go through with the state, it's entirely possible that the new permits will result in more uh or result in a usage that is substantially less than the currently allowed four million, but more in line with what current usage is plus some gap in there. And uh, you know, we don't want to give up that difference between four and one and a half in there. But it's 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 of serious concern and we're treading uh lightly to not upset that current four million situation. Cause that that's that's a good amount for expansion purposes. Uh and so that's where we stand on that.
Was that a a no or a yes?
Uh it's it's an in between.
Okay, all right.
On the other hand, fair enough.
Right.
Thank you for that report and uh continued progress. Thanks for keeping the the water flowing at M S A. Uh for my report, just have a couple of items. Uh one, uh you may very well be aware of this, but the uh V dot uh led North Main Street project is uh delayed until spring of calendar year twenty twenty four, spring, summer. Keep anticipating it's coming. Uh I can almost visualize the the bike lanes and the uh no parking on North Main Street, but um it it is uh still in process. I'm not sure. Haven't had any meaningful updates uh recently or the results of the public meeting that were was held um out at the Horse Center. But um look forward to V dot gaining some traction, hopefully sooner than later. The uh uh Mr. Ziegler um sent an email to council earlier this week um acknowledging that uh there's uh a municipal executive from Ghana who's working with Stephanie Sandberg um and has expressed an interest in uh Lexington becoming a sister city. And some of the writings, uh you might conclude that Lexington is a sister city. Um I received a letter August twenty third from uh Chief Mann indicating that she would be traveling to the States and would like to uh meet to ch- talk about uh becoming sister cities. Stephanie Sandberg's been um uh traveling to Ghana since two thousand nine, when she was at Calvin College. And currently and and continues to through Washington Lee, she just took some students this past spring. And um she's been spearheading this event. I don't know any other details. I don't know what it means to be a sister city. Uh but I've been invited to a meeting with President Dudley, uh Representative Gen- General Wens, um Chief Mann and uh Dr. Sandberg next Tuesday. And um so I will update you and keep you apprised uh as we receive that invitation, uh an announcement from uh Chief Mann and um eager to find out what that looks like and how we might be able to um uh make connections and spread peace throughout our world. And uh lastly, wanted to report um uh for those who may not be aware, city council voted last Thursday in a special meeting to hire Baker Tilly to be the uh search firm. And Ann Lewis, I spoke with earlier today. Um she's uh thrilled to have been selected, uh very eager to get going. She's already uh uh done some outreach and um posted it on on several places. And when I spoke to her um this afternoon, she had three applications so far. Um so I felt like that was a pretty good sign and pretty good work and um looked forward to. She said she was sending um staff some information, uh proposed timelines and meeting opportunities uh with her to uh firm up the process and how we want that to look. So um I felt that was very positive and excited about the 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 prospects. So uh and uh welcome. Any questions anybody has? And if not, I'll pass it to the city manager.
And on that note, I do have a a draft schedule from Ms. Lewis as to when she would like be in town, uh how she envisions this process working so that it's, you know, very quickly, city council can come to a decision as to who this potential new candidate will be for city manager. So I'll share that with you. There. And again, it's a pretty aggressive schedule to try and make sure that, you know, city council has time to make that decision and accept an applicant. Near the first of the year, perhaps in January, you'll see that coming to you. Um there are a couple of probably um major items in that schedule. One is when a finalist would be selected. She's suggesting the week of October twenty third. Uh interviews with finalists could be either the week of October thirtieth or week of November thirteenth. And she has chosen those dates based on the date of the regular council meeting, which doesn't mean you're tied to that, but those were the weeks you have your November meetings or October meetings. So um that's just what she used as a logic to try and make the process work for us. Um obviously, there's some flexibility there uh on your part as to when you want to interview candidates, how you want to review the finalists and get to a point with the assistance of Baker Tilly, Ms. Lewis, as to what finalists are actually interviewed. But this is something, again, a little bit on the aggressive side that she's recommending or proposing to you as a schedule. These are the activities they normally go through in their search and um I guess I'll leave it to you, but they want to get the ball rolling very quickly as uh the mayor suggested. They've had good results already. We've worked with them. I say we, Robbie, get this on uh V M L. It's on our website. It's going to be on Vaco, Naco, the I C M A website. And uh when I'd heard from Ms. Lewis a day or so ago, they had one applicant, so now they're up to three apparently. You know, Lexington's an attractive community to work in. There's going to be plenty of applications, I'm sure. So. Any questions, thoughts?
Y- yeah, on the uh interviews with finalists. So it could either be the week of the week of October thirtieth or the week of November thirteenth. There's not, it's kind of, is it, does it just depend on how, I guess, the proceeding schedule um flows or is there just?
She was again suggesting those two weeks based on when you have your council meetings.
Okay.
So the week of October thirtieth is the the first meeting in November is in that week, and then the week, the following timeframe is the second meeting in in November.
Okay.
And doing that to try and make sure you can make a decision and get an applicant to accept within our timeframe. Clearly, uh you could delay that and do it later in the month. It would, of course, delay the process. You could probably try and move it up if you wanted to try and uh expedite the process a little bit. Would mean some other things maybe are done quicker uh than she's suggesting here, but there's some flexibility in the schedule.
Any other, any other questions from council?
So just just to clarify, uh will we see all applications?
She had, because you'd made that uh comment earlier, she's suggesting no, just to, you know, not in deluge you with thirty applications.
It's our job. I mean, I'd love to see them all. It's our job to see them all. We saw them previously. Uh I I i- if we were allowed to see all thirty applications, that would be my preference since we're hiring her.
Yeah.
And and they're applying to be city manager of Lexington. Can we do that?
Well, and in our work session, we specified that as being a condition.
Yes.
So so it's a condition.
Well, okay, fine. We were going to suggest that just a summary of here's the candidates who applied with their background as opposed to six or eight pieces of paper on thirty candidates, I, you know.
But we still expect her to to rank them and categorize them. We're not taking anything away from her. We just.
Right. Just because her schedule says only a semifinalist report, that would lead me to believe that she would not be planning to give us everything.
We've discussed, right, cor- correct, not the entire thing. She hadn't considered that, but we suggested a summary of candidates.
Of the semifinalists.
I'm I'm reading the form. If you look at October sixth through seventeenth as applicant review. So that would be, and if I'm hearing you correctly, Jim, it's not that she's going to withhold any of the applications or any of the names. If there are thirty names, you'll get the information of all thirty. But instead of the eight page application or whatever it may be, it may just be a summary of that applicant. Um but I I I understand what you're asking. You want every nitty gritty piece of paper and document that you can get on any person that applies for this.
One hundred percent. And and I only, just to clarify, that October sixth through seventeenth is Baker Tilly uh reviewing the applications. At the conclusion of that period, the city, only then does the city receive a semifinalist report and linked to a candidate recorded video.
Yep.
Uh so I would love to be uh made privy to everything that Baker Tilly has in writing. I don't need to obviously be a part of any phone conversations that they're having initially. But I just think if someone takes the time to apply to the city of Lexington, I'd love to see their application. That's the least that I can do.
Well, uh the risk of sounding indignant, I'll remind you that we also have hired a search firm uh professionals to do a lot of this work for us. So but with a special set of skills.
Yeah, we did last time and the ones that they recommended.
Yeah. Perhaps why we didn't select the firm that guided us last time.
We we talked about this at some, at some length in our special meeting. I misspoke when I call it a work session. It was officially a a special meeting in there. And I and I thought we came to a general consensus that we wanted to see them all.
We will make that happen. We will, we will make that happen.
Thank you.
Any other observations or questions on the proposed uh timeline? That seem reasonable as far as the timing?
Other than to let you know I will be away um that week of the twenty third starting Wednesday.
What month?
October.
A a question I have for council, if we um, she's organized a lot of these to coincide with the week of council meetings. A question I have for council, if we, she's organized a lot of these to coincide with the week of council meetings. Do you prefer to have this during a council meeting or prior to or another day of? Or would you rather have meetings to review things on off-council weeks?
I don't get an off week, so it doesn't matter. It's fine with me if it's on council day or another.
The joys of being on the planning commission, yes. Something for council to think about it. We don't need to decide tonight and we're not looking to adopt this. This is first blush and. City manager will take back these thoughts. And if you have other questions or concerns, please pass them along. And we'll get that communicated to Baker Tilly.
And then when we do this survey. September 18th through 29th, who does the a benchmark survey to?
Yeah, that's us.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that we will have homework here in a week and a half. Sounds good.
I would just express a preference for the week of October 30th, if possible, versus November 13th. I don't know if that'll be possible. And I can rearrange things if if necessary, but.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Jim. What else?
There we go. There's the rest of my report. City staff and I would like to suggest that next week, we have a walkthrough of George's Point Park with City Council, to those of you who might want to make it. Tuesday or Thursday night of next week. 5:30ish, 6 o'clock. And I don't care which night it is. If you suggest Tuesday works for half of you and Thursday works for the other half, we'll do two nights. Just to see the projects that have already been started, those that are being proposed that you've seen in the plans or the the suggested parks. Suggested improvements at the park that we've made, just an opportunity to again, see it on the ground. We'll bring the plans along and be able to look at it. Discuss it with us, get some details. So.
Tuesday would be great.
Tuesday is good.
If possible, I'd request 6 o'clock on Tuesday, start time of 6.
I'm here to serve you. I suspect it would work. It's not getting dark yet still until about 8:00. So we have a couple hours, I guess. If we wanted to spend that long.
We'll just meet up in the park.
Sure.
Okay, yeah. So we'll advertise that and that will be considered a work session.
And defer to my attorney.
That will be a meeting.
Yes.
Noticed.
Yeah.
So we'll consider Tuesday on the 6 o'clock. Thank you. 12. Just some updates then on projects with Public Works. Of course, most of us have followed this in the community, I suspect, but the water main replacement on East Denny Street in the. Washington Lee campus has been completed. A little bit of work to button down some of the improvements that were made. We got great participation from Washington Lee. So the project did finish ahead of time and on budget. Consequently, it really did not interrupt their academic year. We were concerned that would be the case. It did not occur. So it was a very good project with their with their support and assistance. The Providence Hill Relining Project, first phase will resume. This week and it's take about five to six weeks to complete the first phase of that project. We'll also move right into the camera. Work on the second phase where they'll look into the sewer lines themselves to see if there's any breakages in the line, root intrusions. Whether the manholes are sufficiently in good shape to be utilized for the near future. Or whether that repairs might occur in some of those instant point repairs. And then it'll identify areas that can be relined in that area, which is the Woods Creek side of the Providence Hill. So. That's the money that the finance director indicated you set aside that that next $1 million for that project. We do have the survey for the Knox property that was purchased for the extension of Evergreen Cemetery. So that we can split that house from that property. That's going to the planning commission, I believe, at their next meeting. Is that right, Arnie? Next meeting, obviously come to City Council then. And if my recommendation will be then taking that before you and asking that to be sold or offered for sale, you know. Recover most of the money we probably paid for the property, the real estate market's still as good as it has been. Patrick, Jen and I are looking at the needs assessment that we've received for City Hall. We've received the initial assessment. We're going to look at that and see if there's needs to be any changes or any improvements to that to finalize it. Frankly, I think Jen mentioned $3.2 million in the CIP and the initial assessment exceeds that significantly. Probably because there are a lot more work envisioned in the building than any of us could see, which is why we had an assessment done. Significant work in all major systems, roofs, the roof as well. There's damage in the roof. So it becomes a little more expensive when we start getting into those types of elements, but we'll have that to you very soon. On South Main Street, we've been holding off on that project. That's a VDOT-funded project to resurface South Main and Link Road. We will again administer that project. VDOT will fund it. We've got to send it out to bid and the state office, VDOT itself. With the Federal Department of Transportation did not approve us going out for bid on schedule. We now receive that approval so we can take it out to bid. When that is finished, we hope to then add our city paving projects to that bid to take advantage of, you know, scale, if you will. But we hope then that we'll see paving yet this year, November or December. Of course, it'll probably be the coldest November, December we've had in 10 years. As you know, typically November has been quite warm these last few years, so we believe we can get some paving done yet this year. If not, it'll be in the springtime. And Patrick and Jen are working on revenue projections for a stormwater fee. Just to let you know that that's something I will propose. We review very carefully in the budget as it's put together and. You know, obviously, being here through some portion of January, that will be something that I will work carefully with staff on. And in some fashion, hand it off to the new city manager, but also have something presented to you or available to you. So you're very well aware of it. So that new individual is not, you know, walking into it without knowledge. You're not walking into the situation or seeing the situation. Only through their eyes with a, you know, somewhat significant loss of of. Knowledge from staff or work from staff. So you'll see that at that timeframe. Public Police Department, I should say, they have three new officers that of course are certified now and one new officer. In the academy. So I think we're just, chief is gone. We're just one officer down now, one staff person down in that regard. The community festivals and the WNL student move-in were the same day this year and that all went well. I think there were some of us concerned that there'd be some significant, significant traffic snarls in the downtown area, but it went pretty well, as I understand. One of our sergeants, Sergeant Brooks, completed the advanced DUI training. I mention those things because training is important to every one of our operating departments, whether it's public works, police, fire. We want to keep people as well-trained as possible and all of them are going through training on a regular basis of one sort or another. And that makes them obviously more valuable. That allows them to do better work for our our community and our residents. We do have police cadets, as you know, and two of our police cadets have been doing ride-alongs with our regular patrol officers. And of course, that allows them to then do some volunteer work in the community. They're better trained for what they believe will be their field of preference, which is law enforcement. And having that relationship with them, we hope will pay off in the future that perhaps they'll stick around. The Mounted Unit Board this last Saturday worked at Lilburn Downing Middle School to park cars. You may recall that we had some complaints about the parking in that area. And since everybody else is charging for parking, we're charging for parking there as well. And the Mounted Unit Board, we're not paying staff to be there. We don't, it's not worth that to the city. So offered it to RARO last year. They took advantage of it with the Mounted Unit Board. This year they declined to do that. So the Mounted Unit Board is using it as a fundraiser and they made just over $400 last week. Planning and development. Still doing well in 2023 year-to-date. The value of improvements is $20,426,976 compared to. $16,662,185 in 2022. So a big increase, if you will. Permit fees collected also reflects that same pattern. This year we've collected $163,142. Versus $117,584 at this time last year. And overall development activities year-to-date are 38 compared to 33 in 2022. Those development activities include things like site plan review, certificate of appropriateness, rezonings, conditional use permits, PUDs, etc. So those type of formalized approvals and activities have still gone up, which is, I think, positive for all of us in this economy today. In the Fire Department, a department trained all new resident assistants at WNL when they came on board. So that they would be able to assist in the event of some type of a problem in the resident halls. They learned how to use the fire extinguishers properly, which you'd think some of us would know, but many of us probably do not actually. We also learned how best to use the fire alarms and to react to those alarms and assist people to react to those alarms. And what best steps to take during a structured fire, so if some would occur, one would occur. So yes, you know. Practical knowledge, but not something that every 20-year-old might know or 22-year-old might know. Hopefully making the campus and students safe there or more safe. The department responded to a head-on collision on the 1200 block Thornhill Road. It was an overturned vehicle. Two patients were transported to the hospital. The injuries were not life-threatening. However, there was a accident they responded to on mile marker 50 on I-64. There were five injuries and one was a fatality. They also hosted the Powhatan County Fire Department. Who wanted to see our most recent ambulance that was purchased. They're putting together specs for their department and they wanted to see what we had just. Obtained and how it worked and what we thought of it. So they were here working with us as we would work with them or other departments when we have that opportunity. They also with the Police Department participated in the Community Helpers Program at Wilburn. Excuse me, Waddell Elementary School, the kindergarten class was there and both police and fire was there with other agencies to. Help the students identify who were the helpers in the community. And I guess the kids got a big kick out of that. I think some of you might have seen the. Picture from the Fire Department of the kids sitting down, listening to some of our firefighters discuss the pieces of equipment that they used. When they did fight fires. So wonderful opportunity for our professionals to relate to the students in our schools. Last but not least, our Board of Elections had to have paperwork indicating our polling stations were ADA-certified. Something new that they had returned into the state and Steve Polk and Patrick Madigan checked along with Trent Roberts. Both of our facilities, one City Hall for early voting and the Piovano Building for regular voting to be sure they met ADA requirements and they do. So that's all I have unless there's any questions from City Council.
Members of council, have any questions for the city manager? Hearing none, please pass along our thanks to the Steve and Pat, Patrick and Trent for the job well done on ADA report. Jeremy.
Not much for me tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. While I was on vacation, Jim was kind to my email inbox and did not pepper me. But he's making up for for lost time now and I do have a handful of contracts and things. I guess the Baker Tilly one might have been the first one. That I'm now starting to work through. I won't bore you with the details. A few other things we've talked about in in closed session that I'm still working on. But if y'all have any questions, obviously I'm happy to answer those, but. Just let you know I'm on the job and responding to things Jim and the staff have for me.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from council? Hearing none, we'll move on to next item, new business, consideration of resolution to declare an intent to reimburse for regional social services building project financing. This is something that we've discussed before and city manager brings before you with a recommendation for approval. Are there any questions or councils considering?
Two questions. One of them was related to, will the other localities need to approve something as well? Or just us?
Just us. We're doing the financing and this is basically a, an opportunity to make sure we recover all of the costs associated with the. Construction and the consultation that is required to a construction building.
Where you get out in front of it, you do this reimbursement resolution. So even though you have done the financing, you can reimburse yourself once you do the financing.
And then this is, I guess, thank you. This this item agenda is, or agenda on the item is is separate from the other. Okay, so that that's that's all I had on this.
This is a separate item resolution that is required, as the city attorney said, so that we can recover all the costs associated with the issuance of debt in the construction. Thank you.
Mr. Ziegler. We have a sense on how much money this we're potentially tying up that would need reimbursed. And would we receive back interest? For example, our funds are right now earning in excess of 5%. In the bank and if we spend money until, you know, are we able to recoup any of the the lost interest?
I don't know about that, frankly.
And I don't know the answer. I will say though, that all of these bonds have lots of concerns about arbitrage and taking money and using it in one manner and recovering interest. That can compromise the tax.
Don't want to, don't run a, don't want to run a foul, just want to. But but what about how much money? I mean, are we talking about fronting? I am honestly, do $100,000 for two months until we get fired or we're two mil, are we going to be moving earth and and we're out where there were $2 million for a year?
It won't be seven figures. I doubt will be. And you know, I can't say for certainty, obviously, but $100,000, that surprised me.
From other times I've seen resolutions used, I would be surprised.
And and does the fact that we are receiving a fiscal agent fee, if you will. For owning the building of a percentage, I forget if it's three or five. Does that come into play at all on this?
That that that's completely separate and I'd also offer up for as a question. In looking at the reimbursement, so when we're putting together the the bond package, attorney's fees and all of that. We may or may not have to front those, but then we get reimbursed, if you will, through the proceeds when the transaction goes through. So we may not, we may not actually front the money. But the the funds are available within the funding of the bonds to repay those additional expenses. That's that's the the piece, not where we're going to throw out a million bucks and we don't see it for two years.
Again, completely trying to understand that, what we're basically putting the city of Lexington. On the hook for, and if we're, if there's a cost. A million dollars earns $50,000 a year in the bank right now. And I just want to make sure that we're.
I I understand completely. And and my explanation.
Yeah, thank you.
Is that, that's clear?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, those will be the fees, your architectural engineering fees that we might have to pay in the next six months.
Okay.
Okay. And frankly, if we didn't want to front at all, we could go to our partners at the county and say, this is your percentage of the 100,000 we're spending on fees. And this is your percentage, Univista, and we could all just decide to pay cash. And not worry about that 100,000 or that $80,000.
This just gives us options.
This allows us to recover every dollar we spend, which is where we want to be. So the recommendation is to approve the resolution, of course.
And welcome council's consideration.
So I make a motion to approve resolution. Reimbursement resolution is it that declares an intent to reimburse the city of Lexington for the DSS building.
Second.
Have a motion, second any further discussion? A roll call vote. Mr. Betts.
Aye.
Ms. Strong.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler.
Aye.
Mr. Alligood.
Aye.
Ms. Alexander.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Next time's consideration of an agreement with Thompson Litten to provide architectural engineering services for the proposed DSS facility. Again, that was in your packet and comes with a recommendation from the city manager and as for council's consideration.
I did have a question on this one. Is there a gap in time from when the lease is up to when they're going to be able to finish the construction? Is the, my understanding was March.
Yes, there is.
What's going to happen during that time?
We will have to come back to you with proposal. We don't know at this juncture. I mean, one of the first steps we will take is to try and make sure we can use the existing space and work with the existing landlord. I mean, one of the first steps we will take is to try and make sure we can uh use the existing space and work with the existing landlord. We have talked with the director of social, social services about that and they will have to try and negotiate probably with our support. I see ours being the locality support. Um. At least initially Spencer Suter, myself and Jason Tyree to support social services in their efforts to negotiate. But we're not, we're not assured that that will work. So we have been looking at other alternatives. There are not many, of course, in town, but we are behind the eight ball in that regard.
Is this a pretty standard construction timeline? Do, do you think any, any other construction company could complete it in a, a quicker timeline?
Well, this is a recommendation, the timeline from our engineer. It's not a construction company. Um, bidding on it or making a proposal, so I would have no idea what any construction company would say at this juncture. Uh, they've suggested there's not much room in this schedule to save the amount of time we would need to get DSS into this building before their lease expires. There could be a, a few weeks worth of time saved, but not months. And that would depend, of course, on the actual contractor and other factors as well.
So it's just kinda is what it is in terms of timeline.
Okay.
I think that's why Mr. House is hoping to get moving with the design contracts.
Understandable.
And I hope their estimate is good and I hope we don't need the fifteen percent contingency and that it holds up and, yeah.
I don't want to put a damper on this, but in case we do run into that problem. Um, when we uh built the new uh Waddell, we had, had to rent trailers and that could be a possibility, you know, if it's uh somewhere we could put them like at the food line, parking lot or someplace near the new construction.
Uh, you're correct. And then the, like you said, the issue would be where can you put them? I don't know right off the top mind how many staff members they have and how much room they would need. But certainly that would be a consideration is then how many trailers and where do you physically put them? But we will be looking at all those options.
Okay.
And we can get started after council takes action.
So I'll make a motion uh to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Thompson and Litton to provide design, architectural and engineering services required for the construction of the proposed DSS facility.
Second. Have a motion. A second, any further discussion? Uh, roll call vote. Mr. Ziegler.
Aye.
Ms. Strong.
Aye.
Mr. Alligood.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Betts.
Aye.
Ms. Alexander.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. Um, the next item on our agenda is the closed session and before Ms. Alexander reads us in, thank you to the public and staff for being here. And uh.
Hey, Miss, can I ask you one question? Sorry, going back to the Baker and Tilly proposal.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, it talks about completing the benchmark survey and during that time, the Baker Tilly consultant's gonna come down. Can I suggest, I, and I don't know what, I don't know what she's planning, but I hope that we have a work session for council to discuss the um what we're looking, qualities we're looking for. In addition to us filling out a survey, I would like to meet face-to-face with everybody. So I don't know if she's planning on doing that when she's here, but if not, at some point I would like to I don't, it doesn't matter to me whether she's here or not, but I would like for us to have a work session that, to discuss that if, if everybody's in agreement.
A work session to discuss the char- characters and profile of the new city manager.
Right, yes.
And whether it be on the twenty-second or um uh Zoom some other time.
Right, sometime during that eight, that time period of September eighteenth through twenty-ninth. I don't know, that may be what her agenda is, part of her agenda for the twenty-second. But in case it's not, in case there, she's just planning to have us all fill it out individually, I would like for us to discuss it.
Gotcha. Okay. Well, we'll find out uh definitively her uh ambitions there. Very good. Anything else? Sorry to rush to closed session. Um. If not, uh, thank you all for being here and uh uh, we do not plan on taking any action when we come out of closed session. And uh, Ms. Alexander, so read us in.
Move that Lexington City Council will convene in a closed meeting in accordance with section two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven subsection A, paragraph three of the Code of Virginia, a closed session for the purpose of discussing the disposition of publicly held real property located at six twenty-six Waddell Street where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the city's bargaining position or negotiating strategy.
Second.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you for the second uh roll call vote, Ms. Strong.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler.
Aye.
Mr. Betts.
Aye.
Mr. Alligood.
Aye.
Aye. We're in closed session.